At this point, I just wanna have a approval for the minutes of January nineteenth meeting. January nineteenth, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion? Motion from Mayor Gelli, second. Second to Drew Derby, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Nantale?
Yes.
Mr. Viviani?
Yes.
Mr. Inber?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
And Al.
Yes, okay. At this time, I have also a per- Jerry, Jerry, we have some per-.
Yes, we need to go into closed session for personnel and our contract matter. So I would recommend ask that the.
Can I just, uh, carry one of the applications? For appeal number three nine five eight eight. They're carrying this application, they'll be amending the plans of these minutes. These schedule us for the three March sixth agenda.
New notice.
We submit, time for Terry to be here.
New notice.
New notice, yes. He's, 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 I'm, I'm redesigning that, the plans it says over here. He's amending the plans, it's gonna have to be renewed, new notice.
Yes, I understand.
Whenever he's ready, let him let you know, since new notice will never be great.
Do you vote or is that just an announcement? All right, Chairman, we need a motion to go into closed session for the person.
Yes, do we need a motion for this?
No, that's all right, just a motion to go into closed session, the minutes will be held until the Neere Comanche, yeah, we no longer exist.
Okay, make a motion. Motion from Mayor Gelli, second, Ms. Inber, everyone please to the back, thank you.
This is what I bring for myself, I know far from that. Even Frank goes to the house. All kind, you want to see the applications, I don't like the meetings. If you take the right. You're not sure. I'm not on here, I don't know. I'm lucid, I think it's. Usually if they, if they have something.
Maybe too much time. It's something you're raging about, why not?
Okay. Good evening again, moving forward, back to the meeting.
Chairman, may I?
Yeah.
We have discussed, and there's a resolution for consideration by the zoning board to adopt new rules and regulations to supplement what we adopted last month. In short, general matter, that the rules and regulations establish a technical review committee. So that the professional staff can review the applications with the applicant ahead of time, or notices go out to the public. So that we can streamline the process and make sure that the application is complete and everything's in the file so this can be put gets into a regular hearing. If it's not, then we'll not get to the public hearing until it is complete. Generally speaking, that's what we, and this is gonna be on trial basis, we're gonna give it a, a try for the first three or four months, which we can streamline the trial a little bit. And we hope that it will gain accommodation to the public so that they don't show up in a hearing. And for whatever reason, the application has to be put off an extra month because it's not complete. In addition, the rules and regulations in part provide that if there is not seven members here, that's not a reason for the applicant to request or receive an adjournment. The application's gonna go forward. If there's not seven members, the vote will wait until the next month, until one of the absent members hears the tape or reviews the minutes. And generally speaking, those are the rules and regulations. And they're on file at Fran Seal's office tomorrow, if you wanna ask her for them. And we need a resolution to adopt it, Chairman.
Yes, so hearing what my attorney, Jerry Dassia, just said, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the resolution that was put together.
My motion that we adopt the resolution.
I have a motion. Motion from Obi Gonzalez, second by Mayor Gelli, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Langley? Mr. Nantale?
Yes.
Mr. Viviani?
Yes.
Mr. Inber?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Al.
Yes. Okay, moving forward. Moving forward, we have one letter corresponded, some Kanel Kerschwitz. Madam Secretary.
Appeal number three nine five six requesting that conditions be removed and you will notice from the government. You don't have a copy of the letter?
I don't have a copy of the letter. I'm, I got it here. I got it, I got it, I got it. Oh, before I continue, I forgot to just make a quick announcement before. If anyone that's here for applying to repeal number ZB thirty nine fifty eight eight, that has been disposed to the, um, um, at least the March sixth meeting. Uh, but he has to renotice, so we didn't put it on the calendar, definite on the calendar. Uh, but at least move to the March sixth meeting. If you don't get it for the notice, then you know that it's not gonna be heard. Thank you. Okay, who's here? Back to Mr. Kerschwitz, yes. So, Mr. Kerschwitz, I read your letter over here. Uh, can you explain to me in a not, in a brief concept, what, what happened, what transpired? And why you don't want us to move forward with your normal way, the way we normally do things here, which is one-third brick and script system and all that other little stuff.
Okay, so I was here, um, a few months back, requesting a very, a very relatively minor variance, literally for a platform, for a side door. I had the combined twenty-five feet without that platform. I have ten feet, even, ten feet and ten feet from each side with the platform. It was, this, this requirement for the platform is relatively a new law. I understand because certain people are taking advantage of making huge platforms and, um, um, and whatever, going up to a neighbor's property. I stayed far away from my neighbor's property, ten feet and ten feet. Um, it's, um, combined, I have the twenty-five feet. It was, it went forward relatively quickly because I, I think when I came here, nobody.
Kerschwitz, let me, let me try to help you, we'll cut to the chase. Because I understand that you're here this evening because one of the conditions in the resolution was that you have at least a third of the front of the building, uh, brick, stone, or. Brick, stone, or stucco irrigation and, and irrigation plantings, or, and, and plantings, which, that's a condition in the resolution, but that, you're not building that way. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you have a very nice picture of the front of the hall.
Correct.
Because I understand you're here tonight so that you can get the, you can ask for the approval of the zoning board to waive that condition so you can get a, a final CO.
Correct, correct, and just to clarify, when, at the meeting itself, when there was a discussion of how to make it work, for me, um, that was affordable and everything. Um, there was no discussion about this, uh, brick, stucco, um, and bushes and sprinklers. Um, I'm not a, I'm relatively, I'm not into construction, I don't know exactly what goes on, but had that been, had I known at that point, I'd either discuss it then, or may have dropped, dropped the variance altogether. I know it was in the variant, in the resolution at the end, but if you look in the minutes, it's not there. Um, and maybe I should have paid, paid attention to the resolution, I didn't. I actually submitted resolution compliance that showed the plot, um, the plot plan being moved over. And was approved by the township as being resolution compliant, so I just did everything that I knew, to the best of my knowledge, um, how to do these things. Um, and at this point, the house is all but done, and there's a bank loan and everything that's all done, the money's all spent. And for me to, to start implementing these, uh, compliance, uh, whatever they're called, um, compliance issues, that would be a, a burden on me. And I have several people from my neighborhood here, um, will all agree that bricks, stucco, and, and landscaping and all that kind of thing, they can raise their hand and, and, and show that they don't want that in our neighborhood. It's not something, I understand that certain neighborhoods, we don't want, the, the, the board doesn't want them to get ruined and, and, uh, by just duplexes and triplexes without any design. We're talking about a side porch over here, and, uh, that's just a platform.
I understand what you're saying, let me ask you a quick question, you built the house yourself, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
So you didn't build it through any developer or subdivision, um, or anyone that sold you this property who should have known, uh, how this thing should have been built?
Correct.
You owned the house, they reported.
I owned the house, correct.
And, and you built yourself a new house all by yourself?
Right.
And you basically didn't read the resolution the way you read it until you got to the very end, that's what I understand.
Correct, I, I, I just, I paid attention to what was at the meeting, I saw the minutes, I didn't really, I didn't realize there would be a difference between what's discussed at a meeting and a resolution afterwards, I'm just not familiar with it.
Okay. So, guys, you see what hap- what happened over here? So, just, we have to decide what you wanna do over here.
Mr. Halb- Mr. H- just a few questions, Mr. Kerschwitz, why can't you, I see the picture, can't you put shrubbery in the front of the house?
I could do anything, it's just, at this point, to, the house is, was built specifically to be very simple to.
I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the front facade, why can't you put shrubs in the front of the house?
A shrubs, shrubs is, anything that I'm gonna add to the house right now is an extra expense that was not anticipated, I'm, I'm like beyond. It's, I don't, I listen, I would imagine it's a thousand dollars or something to put in, and I'm, I'm looking to avoid this, um. Again, I, I came here because there was three things in the resolution, and I, I would prefer not to have to put in anything. At, at, at the right time, when, when I'm able to, I do, I, I will put in, uh, shrubs, but right now, as a, as a condition for CFO. Um, if I was building the house without the variance, I wouldn't have to put in the shrubs. The shrubs are only there because of the variance, and the house is looking, is looking very nice and fits very nicely into the neighborhood, that my neighbors appreciate. And to start building it up, whatever I have to do, is just making.
Can we, can we paint the, the foundation? Can we put some stucco paint on the wall of the foundation so it should look something decent? We don't like to give variances, and we hear where, um, it should, it should look kind of, kind of, as.
The variance that the side.
That's what we do, that's what we have to rule over, I understand you're, you're, I understand that you're not a builder, you're not a developer. Uh, you built the house, not going into detail of the resolution. Um, at the same time, um, some, we're afraid, that's why we asked you to put a sprinkler system. What we do things over here is because on a development or on a subdivision, we know that within two years, there's no front lawn, there's no garden left, there's nothing left over there, because no one takes care of it. Put in a, put in a sprinkler system in there, you know that the grass is gonna be nice, it's gonna be, look somewhat decent in front of the house, or somewhat has to look something decent. What can we do over here to give it a minimal requirement, or, or, or something?
So I, I understand that the, this, the words that you just mentioned were subdivision and development, this is a side porch variance, it's not a.
I understand that.
This is not a, it's nothing that, that took away from the character of the house or neighborhood that would require redecorating the house, without that side porch, it would, it would be good to go.
You built it, you, you built it for yourself?
Right.
With your old house, you threw down, you didn't go, you didn't take the details into consideration, um, of the, of, of the house. And I, and, and I grant you that, that honest error and honest mistake, because I understand you built the house for yourself, not through any major subdivision. Terry, what do you think? One second, one second. No, Terry, Terry?
Yes, Terry.
What do I think?
Well, obviously, as part of the board's approval, uh, the board needs to make a decision as to whether this is a hardship case that's worth entertaining. Personally, this is just my opinion. I think there may be little ground, I think the idea of stucco paint is an excellent point. Personally, this is just my opinion. I think there may be little ground, I think the idea of stucco paint is an excellent point. I think the idea of putting some shrubbery, not necessarily a full-blown landscape job.
Correct.
Going down deep hill or lows, purchasing shrubs yourself and planting them. That's my opinion.
Okay. I know, I know, yes, you want this as a draw?
Yeah, I mean, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with Terry, it's just, what was concerning to me is that, um, you know, you can build a house, look inside your own mind, you look at the plan when you build the house? You didn't make a mistake about where bathroom should be, or where to put the, the, you know, the beams and the studs and everything else, and you had to take that responsibility. And your responsibility also should have been to read this and see what the resolution was, the resolution was for these three things, and it should have been here. But we're standing here today, and it's not done, and you're taking somewhat of a hardship that is hard for you to do. I just think that it's, it's becoming to, would be in your benefit and your favor to at least compromise somewhat. Because, you know, as Terry is saying, you know, I, I, I hear some sentiments.
Okay, could we, could we just do, um.
Because a lot of neighbors, I do hear some sentiments from the board that, you know, at least the other members that have talked, that there, you know, there is, um, you know, put stucco, paint, some shrubbery, something. I mean, you know, the truth is, if you can let home people, as Terry said, you can buy something, you could, uh, paint that one area, put some stucco by the driveway, and just dress it up and just satisfy the board. So, you know, we don't have to go back to square one. I think what he's asking, Judy, what, what he's saying is, is what you were, what you were exactly touching on, his only problem is that it wasn't ever discussed during the opposition, we had a issue, didn't know to look at it. Which, which I understand, and I, I think he's right.
I think some of my neighbors would have objected to it.
I agree with that, but I think that if somebody takes responsibility of building a house, the same way he's responsible for looking at the blueprints, he's gotta look at this, this is the byback right here, before he gets to the blueprints.
Correct, I agree, but this problem, this, this, this problem is, this issue is, that, that, since it wasn't even mentioned to him, he didn't think, look out for it. You know, he's not, as you doesn't know, you know, you give permission to sign a setback, go ahead, boom, how do you want it?
That's what we think, anybody's saying that he's a damn guy.
I think also some of my neighbors would have objected to it.
You understand that, that's what I'm saying, you know, so that's why we, you need to think some, there's some stucco paint that you can just clear on the front, um, a couple of small, whatever, um, maybe we'll, we'll let him get away with the sprinkler system on it, you know.
We just do the masonry paint and.
What?
We'll do masonry paint.
That, you know, whatever, anyone.
And also, I just wanna point out, it's not gonna be one-third of the house because of siding already.
I, I, we didn't, no, no one said one-third of the house over here. We said, we said.
Foundation.
We, we, we set the foundation, to beautify the foundation, it shouldn't look like a, a, a rural foundation sticking out over there. You know, you could, you know, Kelly, you could, you could want also, on neon green. Um, go ahead.
When you came here for the approval, who represented you?
I was here by myself. It was a very simple thing.
Engineer?
It was a very simple thing, and anything fancy, I think it would have had neighbors objecting.
He, he had no one, he was with himself, it was a single, this is what we call the privateest who knows, own little, um.
He would have a professional, I would, I would have.
So right now, you're agreeing to some stucco paint and some shrubbery?
It's stucco paint.
Okay.
If I, if I have to, I'll, I'll do what I have to, I really would prefer.
Seems like the most expensive is the sprinkles.
Okay.
Yeah, we, so we, we, I'm, I'm okay to let, to, to, to put that. Okay, guys, um, um, whatever you wanna do, make a motion, however you want, um, if you wanna do it, if you don't wanna allow it, whatever you guys wanna do.
I make the motion that we approve it with the conditions we just stated.
Which is?
Stucco and shrubbery.
The, 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 the cement, um, the, the stucco cement?
Yes.
Or the foundation?
The foundation on the foundation one. Disposed foundation one.
It was not a third.
Not a third, don't, don't touch the, don't touch the, um, siding. Not a third. Don't touch the, don't touch the siding.
The front, just on the front.
The whole side of the house, the whole house, because that whole, that whole side comes in. We want everything to be uniform, not just the front of the house. We're giving you leeway just whenever you do that. Because he probably did the whole side on the foundation. So the whole foundation has to be painted the same. So if people see the side, as well as the front, they'll be able to see it the same. I want uniformity around the whole house.
Okay, not the back.
Being that you did it this way, make it so that it looks nice around the whole place.
So not the back.
The back, you have your deck on. I really see what you're doing.
I have, I have windows coming out the side also. It's not exactly, the side's not so much exposed.
The side, you have entrances, you have sidewalks on it. I want it to look the same.
The side, we have a motion. Run the two sides. Okay, we have a motion from Al and I have a second from Mayor, Mayor Revia. Mayor Gilli, I'm sorry. Mayor Secretary, roll call please.
I just want to confirm it's the entire front and two sides, stucco painting on the foundations.
And an adequate number of shrubs.
And how many shrubs?
Adequate number.
And that's from Mayor Gilli?
It's from Al and Mayor Secretary.
May I recommend something, Chairman?
Yes.
The engineering department is going to be asked to sign off on this.
Yes.
Why don't you specify six shrubs, eight shrubs? Give them something that they can interpret. This is what the board wanted. You can't say it on a term.
I didn't say that.
So Terry, what would be your recommendation?
When you say adequate, what did you? What, you said three shrubs in the front?
Three shrubs.
Side. So you got three shrubs. Was that a hundred bucks a shrub?
Six shrubs. Never a deep hill is to it.
What?
Never a deep hill is to it.
Whatever.
What? Twenty dollars a shrub?
All loads.
All loads. Or, 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 or.
Or a group of.
Yes.
Look at the picture, on the two sides, on the windows.
The front? The two sides.
He's going to have to know that then he can be specific.
Six in the front.
Six in the front, however you want.
Six shrubs.
Six shrubs.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
The Nahtalai, the Vidia.
Yes.
Mr. Ingle, the Valens.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good night and good luck.
Drake, yeah.
You remember Drake?
I don't know if he's turned, it's not bad.
I cast him a second. How are you doing, though?
Good.
All right, we're going to move forward. Appeal number thirty-eight, I'm sorry, thirty-nine seventy-eight, gap construction.
Can't you tell with the beer?
Okay.
I took over the application.
Appeal number thirty-nine seventy-eight, gap construction.
Thirty-nine seventy-eight, gap construction, lot four seven one, seven point oh one, seven point oh two, sixteen fifty boulevard, HD six zone. Conditional use variances for duplex.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Fevertson, behalf of the applicant. This application is a little bit of an interesting story behind it. The application actually came before this board in June of sixteen with an application which Terry's, which Terry issued a review letter on. Shortly thereafter, upon conferring amongst the project, it was of the opinion that this application was actually a fully conforming subdivision in the HD seven zone. And did not need before, did not need to be before the board for a subdivision. Everyone agreed subsequently, the plan, everything was revised, given back into the township. Township went ahead and reviewed it under their zero lot line ordinance and issued a subdivision approval. The applicant thereafter did everything he had to do for resolution compliance, completing everything, giving it to the professionals. The next step, after he got it all completed and subdivided the property, he requested a demolition permit, which was issued. And he demolished the home that was on the property. He also got a building permit for a duplex home as per the approval. That construction has started. Shortly, recently, apparently an inquiry came in regarding if that, if this property actually was in the HD seven zone or if it was in the HD six zone. Turns out it's in the HD six zone. The issue that's really at hand is that it is less than two hundred feet from Route nine. Now, there was an ordinance that started a few years back, which limited, restricted any residential developments within two hundred feet from Route nine. Now, the quirky thing, a little bit interesting about this property, this property is actually three properties in from Route nine. And the house faces on Finchley. It does not face Route nine. It actually, like I said, it's the third property in. Here, at this point, it's almost, not only that, the applicant cannot even today go back and put back the single family home. Because single family homes are not permitted in the HD six zone. This is almost like a reverse condemnation case. It was a mistake on the township's side. It was not my client thinking, you're going to get one by everybody. This was all submitted to the professionals and it was an oversight. At this point tonight, we were here before you seeking a use variance to continue the construction of the duplex home that's currently under construction. I will tell you that if you're standing in front of the property to the right, there are a row of about four or five duplexes. That has nothing to do with this applicant, but a different developer, they're up and they're there. To the left of the property is a single family home that technically now is a pre-existing non-conforming use. And then there is the property that fronts on Route nine. At this time, I just want to swear in Brian Flannery, address any technical questions. We have no problems with Terry's review letter. It's just, we're in a bind here in a hard place.
Before you continue.
Yes.
This was done on the planning board or this was done administratively?
So after, once administratively.
Okay, so did I go to the planning board for an approval?
It's, yes, it's a.
Either for it.
In it was, so it was not, it was.
Administrative approval, correct.
My next question is, you said the construction, continue the construction. Where is this construction up to?
Footings are already in.
Well, let's get, let's get Mr. Flannery under oath, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Pepper. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and all be god?
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. As Adam has indicated.
Were you sworn in for this tonight's session?
Mr. Flannery just sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you accept him as an expert?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Just got to make sure.
So as Adam has indicated, the applicant went through a process, was issued a building permit, proceeded in good faith. When the footings were in the ground, an inquiry was made and we're here this evening asking for approval of something which my testimony is going to be, it makes sense. But it's something that has the additional hardship of, he had a pre-existing, non-conforming use of a house sitting on the property that he knocked down based on proceeding in good faith from the action of the township, which now can't be rebuilt. We look at the HD six under permitted uses. And it's my testimony that none of these are appropriate for this particular lot. As Adam indicated, this particular lot is two lots in from Route nine. The lot fronting on Route nine is part of the subdivision that was done by Marshall Weisman years ago that's never been built for townhouses. So that's an open space lot. So nothing's going to be built on that.
Which one is that?
That would be.
Straight behind you, those town.
Lot nine point oh one. And it's indicated on the tax map as open space. So lot nine point oh one, which fronts on Route nine, is open space. Lot eight, which is next to that, there's an existing house. And then this seventy-five foot wide lot, which is split between, by the two hundred foot line. I've marked three exhibits. A one is just the plan that was submitted. A two is a tax map exhibit showing the subject property in orange, the two hundred foot line which runs along Route nine in red. And as I'm sure the board is familiar with, there's townhouses on the, on the east side of that line, closer to, closer to Route nine. All the way along this, this property. Now, when the township passed this ordinance, they passed it in two thousand and thirteen. They made it effective in two thousand and fourteen. So that anybody that knew they had a problem had an opportunity to submit an application and could build. This particular property, if they had known, they could have submitted in that year timeframe. It was a permitted use at the time. It would have been approved and they would have been able to keep building. They weren't aware of it. It's, as Adam said, it's not somebody that was trying to trick anybody. It was, it's a situation that sort of got, gotten out of control. But let me read to you the permitted uses in the HD six zone, so that hopefully you will agree with me that they're not uses that make sense for this particular property. The HD six zone makes, has permitted uses, which makes sense for property that front on Route nine. And that's the intent of that zone. And I know I have that paper with me. Oh, it's the one on top. That's why I didn't see it. So the permitted use in the HD six zone, hotels and motels. It's not a hotel motel zone. Professional occupations. Now, when you put the setbacks on this, you have a thirty foot wide combined setback. So you can only get a forty foot wide building. You have a fifty foot front and a thirty foot rear. So again, we're talking about a little tiny building, which doesn't make sense for the professions, the studio, the music teacher, the photographer. You get to some of the other ones, undertaking establishments, not the right place for undertaking establishments. Buildings used for administrative purposes only by the federal, state and county governments. Public utilities, banks, clubs, lodges, public recreation, public libraries, museums. And then we get to the schools and schools. And it's the kind of a property that maybe before it was knocked down, somebody might say, well, you put a school there as a startup school. Neighbors wouldn't have liked that. It wouldn't have fit in. Any of the uses that I've talked about, in my opinion, it doesn't make sense. This property, it has a duplex immediately to the west of it. It has townhouses approved behind it. The, as you go down Route nine, there's other townhouses. You got the nursing home. It's a house that was in need of redevelopment. Now it's not there anymore. It's a property that needs an appropriate development. And my testimony is that an appropriate development is the duplex that's proposed. It fits in well. It's, you know, the two hundred feet that was selected when they did the ordinance was rather arbitrary. Hundred and sixty is close to two hundred. And I think, in my opinion, based on what's next to it, it's close enough. I don't see it as causing any problem from a standpoint of traffic or appearance. The, it's going to appear similar to what's there. It's going to be a beautiful house. For the record, this applicant will be happy to make one-third stone to put in landscaping and to put in the irrigation. So it looks good. And when people drive down the street, they.
Flannery, the chairman was asking, what stage is the development now?
The footing, the footings are in the ground. It was excavated, the footings were constructed and it.
And the block was delivered for the foundation and that's when we got to stop, stop recording. I also just want, I'm sorry, I just want to also point out that there was a, I was reminded earlier by Ms. Morgan, that the ordinance, there was a mistake in the ordinance when it was written. It was meant to say two hundred feet fronting on Route nine. Again, the intention of the ordinance was not to.
Fronting on Route nine.
The two hundred, any property that fronts on Route nine should have a two hundred foot, should be residential, should not be residential for the first two hundred feet. So this property is on, like I said, is on Finchley and is the third property in. The intent had nothing to do with a property that fronts on Finchley. The idea that township wanted was not.
You don't want that comment.
Okay. Well, I'm.
Yeah, two hundred, what if somebody owns two hundred feet?
No, it's an oversight that was in the ordinance.
He's not saying that.
No, no, no. He has his opinion.
His opinion, it's a very relevant point.
Mr. Flannery, we're going to label A three the blown up tax man, okay?
Yes.
Now, are you saying lot nine is open space?
Yes.
And where is lot nine? I don't see it.
Lot nine is the white.
In the corner?
And it's lot nine point oh one. It's the corner and that proceeds all along the front to Chevy Lane. And then there's, on the other side of Chevy Lane, there's more open space.
And who owns, the town owns that?
I'm not sure who owns that. The town does not own it.
Well, then how do you know it's open? I mean, it might be vacant, but how do you know it's open space?
Because the tax map labels it as open space. My office, thirteen, fourteen years ago, got the approval. And the townhouses that were approved were approved as a site plan along with the open space. That the density was dictated on a certain number of units. And those number of units were approved based on the open space along Route nine.
So is Route nine to the right all the way over?
Yes. Route nine is to the right. This sits the same as, same orientation as the tax map. Route nine is easterly to the right. This map here is to show what's still existing in this little piece of the HD six. The two hundred foot line, everything on the, less than two hundred feet is colored in pink. So the lot eight is less than two hundred feet. So it doesn't allow new residential development. Half of lot seven, pink, doesn't allow new residential development. Lot twenty-eight and twenty-nine, also, lot thirty by right could go to the building department and get a duplex.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. It is my opinion that this was done in two thousand and thirteen. The house, lot eight, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, are kind of, I would say, like forty, fifty years old homes?
Yes.
And they're for a longish time, right?
Yes.
So their old grandfather in that house was to burn down. The property is worthless for, as far as putting up a single family or duplex house. The township put in the two hundred foot requirement for the reason that they want to have more retail on, fronting Route nine. Less homes fronting Route nine. Township put in two hundred feet because we also know that the county wants us to go back seventy-five feet from the center line, which is about twenty-five feet further deeper in than we are today for widening time if they ever get to it, right?
My opinion and my knowledge of the facts differs from yours. First of all, Route nine is a State Department of Transportation. The State Department of Transportation has a desired typical section. And the desired typical section is a little, probably close to twenty-five feet from the right of way line.
Correct. So that's what they want us to, they want us to stay back seventy-five feet from the center line on each side.
Well, you said it, you said it was something the county wanted.
I'm sorry, I meant, you got me. I'm sorry, I meant that you got the technicality. Good, so let's use this thing. Wow, okay.
Also, you said the intent of the ordinance, and you gave your opinion of the intent of the ordinance. Adam has given his opinion of the intent of the ordinance. Just so we're clear, I have a copy of the ordinance, and they didn't clearly specify their intent. What they did say, it's two sentences, they said, whereas the township committee of the Township of Lakewood is desirous of limiting new residential development in close proximity of Route nine, south of Central Avenue.
Ryan, but you know just as good as I do, when this thing came up for discussion in the township committee as to why they did it, and I think if you just go down memory lane, you'll remember that there were a lot of, there were a number of people on the township committee that wanted Route nine widened, they want more retail on Route nine, they don't want so much residential homes, butting up through Route nine, just in case Route nine does get widened, they want to see more office, retail, transition, but homes, but retails closer to Route nine. Now, the fact that there's a house in front of it, right?
Yes.
Is irrelevant, because it was there way before, way years before this ordinance came into effect. So either you're going to tell me that the ordinance was null and void then, because you can't give an ordinance because the house is there, right?
No, what I am going to tell you, and you let me finish my testimony.
Yes.
And I know that's because you think you know what I'm going to say, and you don't have to hear it. But what I was...
Well, you can say it for the record.
What I was going to say is that the, my opinion about why the township did it is, first of all, they didn't want any houses that were going to have access onto Route nine. And secondly, they were trying to encourage commercial development along Route nine. So, well, you said it a little different, but...
Okay, but...
So if the intent is to encourage commercial development along Route nine, that's not something that's really going to be applicable to Lot seven.
Why not?
Because it's got an open space lot. Any development along Route nine wants Route nine frontage.
I'm starting to object about the open spaces designation. Can you pull out this map? Can you read, would be on this map if you have?
What map do you have, Ryan? Perry?
I have the...
Perry?
The temporary use variance map prepared by Christian Paul.
Okay.
Do you have that?
Yes, I do.
Perry, you on page one?
I'm sorry?
Page one?
Page one. Where is Lot nine?
Lot nine isn't shown. If you see a long Finchley...
Lot eight goes to Route nine.
No, no. There's a brake line, and this is something that surveyors and engineers do to confuse attorneys, is they put a brake line in here.
You're doing a great job.
And it worked, it worked.
Where is your designation of Lot nine on the variance map?
It's not on the variance map.
All right, let me, let's look in the upper left-hand corner where it says 200-foot property owner. Where is Lot nine on there?
9.01. Lot 9.01, here's the tax map.
Okay, good.
Here's 9.01. Lot, the subject, Lot seven.
Jerry, we need somebody, we need you both on the mic.
Okay, I see what you're saying, but that's not what this map shows.
Well, the map shows the property, and I think it properly depicts the property, from a engineering and surveyor standpoint. It shows a brake line, so it shows that that much of it is Lot eight, and apparently, let's try to see who prepared the map. But New Lines Engineering, when they prepared the map, they didn't think that was a significant feature to show all the way to Route nine, and show that the open space lot is there.
Well, all right, hold on, please, though. The upper left-hand corner shows the names of the assessed owners, and Lot 9.01, which you referred to as open space, is owned by C...
Hook LLC. C. Hook LLC, which was an LLC that subdivided this entire property.
Okay, but...
And part of the subdivision approval was designating that as open space.
Is there a subdivision map which shows that that's on it as open space?
Yes, and as I indicated, the tax map also says open space. But there's a subdivision map, and the resolution granting the subdivision says that that's open space.
Can you provide me that resolution? Not tonight.
Yes.
And what's on Lot 10, which is the other side of these duplexes?
Well, that is Lot, it's now Lot 10.01 and 10.02, and there's a duplex on it.
I see, that's, I see right there.
Should I mark this A4?
A3 is the blown-up copy of the tax map, colored to show the properties eligible for residential development, and in pink, the properties that would need conditional use approval from this board in order to have residential development.
What's the total distance from the end of your, what's the total distance, end of your line's lot to Route nine?
160 feet.
From the end of it, so it's from the beginning of the property?
From the beginning of the property. Lot eight and Lot 9.01 are a total of 160 feet.
And your property is Lot seven?
75 feet. Our property is Lot seven, and the line goes 40 feet into the applicant's property.
So at the end of the property, then it would be 250, about 200, a little less?
Yes. A little less than 200 feet.
Yeah. Yes, okay. It's basically, all right.
Can I finish my testimony now?
Go ahead, continue.
Okay. So the intent, as I see it, was to limit new residential development in proximity to Route nine, in order to eliminate the conflicts and to encourage commercial development. It's my opinion that there's going to be no conflict because of this residential development with Route nine, because it's 160 feet away. And I think clearly if I came to the board and it was 195 feet away, we'd say it was de minimis, and we'd get an approval and everybody'd go away. At some point, it's too close, and at some point, it's far enough. It's my opinion that for this particular piece of property, the 160 feet, because there's an existing house that's not owned by this applicant, and an open space lot in between, so the potential for the commercial development in accordance with the other uses in the HD six zone are not really appropriate, and certainly don't provide an ideal use for it. Some of the uses that I read clearly don't make any sense on that lot. The setbacks that are required as part of the HD six would negatively impact the property. This particular applicant has that additional hardship that he had something there, acted in good faith based on the township's approval, and now he's in a much worse position. One thing I wanted to point out to you with respect to the Smart Growth Plan, all along Route nine, there's a highway carter. The highway carter has a, is omitted along Finchley, because Finchley is a collector road that doesn't lend itself to the highway carter in accordance with figure 4.0 of the Smart Growth Plan. Most of the full distance along Route nine, there's a pink area showing where they're expecting commercial development. Finchley Boulevard, on both sides of this red box, it's not colored in pink, it's not part of the highway carter, which to me indicates that the township recognizes what I've been trying to convey, is that these types of properties don't lend themselves to the commercial development that you would get in the highway carter. So we look to the master plan of 2007, it encourages development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. It's certainly my opinion that this fits in well there, and it accomplishes that goal. The municipal land use law, NJAC 40, call it 55D2, A is encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state, in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And I think the old building that was there needed to be redeveloped, this is the redevelopment that made sense, even if it wasn't already knocked down, it would have been my testimony that it made sense. And certainly, under the circumstances, I think there's a hardship that raises it to a new level. To promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being, neighborhoods, communities, regions. We all know Lakewood needs housing. The master plan and the Smart Growth Plan talk about providing housing opportunities where they work. If this was closer to Route nine, I would not be able to tell you that it worked. It's certainly my opinion that this is an area that it works. We're here asking for a D variance, and to grant the D variance, we have to give you special reasons on why this should work. And it's my testimony that it's a, benefits the general welfare by providing the housing opportunities. It's particularly well-suited to this development because it has duplex right next to it, in all probability, there'll be a duplex across the street from it, there's townhouses behind it, and in my opinion, it's the development that makes sense for this. So based on the townhouses behind it, based on the duplex next to it, based on all the other development along Route nine, it's my opinion that this is suitable. Finchley, we all know is a collector, which is why the duplexes to the west of it were approved by this board initially. With respect to the positive criteria, when I read from the master plan and the land use law, I think those give reasons why it should be done. When we look to the negative criteria, it's my opinion that the additional house here that could have been built in 2014, and if the property owner had understood, he would have gotten an approval, and we wouldn't all be sitting here tonight. I think those are sufficient reasons for the board to grant this relief.
Are you done?
Yes.
On Lot 27, is it open space as well, across the street?
No, I believe that's a township-owned lot.
No, it says exempt G. We can probably see on the...
Lot 27?
Yeah.
Jeanette Shines.
It says it's on, Chairman, it says it's owned by Jeanette Shines, she's in Perryale.
In Perryale, yeah, I see that. Questions of the total space as well on that?
I'm sorry?
I was questioning that open space as well.
I'm going to cross the street.
I don't believe that would have been part of the application, I don't think that was part of...
That was definitely not part of the other application.
I understand.
I don't know of any application that would have designated that as open space. It's clearly tax-exempt for some reason, I don't know what the exempt G means.
Okay. I just have, I haven't seen the resolution like Jerry had the S4. So it's very hard, at this point, in my, really assesses properly to see if I want to give an exemption map, and what exactly does open space mean? Does open space mean that you can never, ever build there? Does open space mean that, I know what you're going to say, but I want to get you on the topic. Does open space mean you can never, ever, ever build there? Does open space mean that the township can't sell it, and then decide to change the ordinance and build something there?
Because you're not... Chairman, I think the problem is that we don't have the resolution.
I understand, correct.
And we don't know exactly what was the intent of, I guess, the planning board. It does say open space on the tax map, it's really small print, but I certainly would like to see the resolution see any specific language about it.
Because if it's open space, the intent of why the township wanted to widen, keep 200 feet, is null and void, doesn't exist, because you can't utilize it for anything. Oh, that's on the ups. For that, you don't need 200 feet, for that, you need something up in the center line. You know, so if, I'm trying to figure out what really the intent of open space means, can you never ever build there, can you not? Now, if we were to grant this subdivision over here now, what's going to stop Lot 28, 29, across the street? Same thing, when it's right across the street. That's why I asked if the front is also open space.
The distance is conjugated, it's...
I understand that, that's only the footing that's in there, so it's an oversight, okay, it's fine. So we have to take that into consideration.
And you knock down the house.
And you knock down the house. But we also know that the house that are there, in front of it, is an old house.
Yeah, but should any applicant come forward, we're always saying that the township gave approvals for this and not that.
I understand that, but still, do we, what do we do for the house now across the street, Lot 28, 29? 28 will say it's not directly across, 29 is directly across, you'll also want one, especially when Lot 27 is not part of the open space issue, and somebody could do whatever the township wants to do on that whole area. So we have to take this whole, take, you have to take the whole thing into consideration of really, how's it going to affect the whole entire parcel, and how's it going to affect the township's intent, and what they want to do with 200 feet.
Ryan, putting the 200 feet aside, is this lot and the building 100% conforming?
Yes, fully conforming.
The reason I ask is, on your, where you lay it out on the data, it looks like it's conforming, but then when you have it on the actual map, it says 25 setback, where you, where it says, over here it says 25 required, 43, 50 years ago. You're just saying over here not, but it is, but it's required.
Yes, it's required.
There's no, there's no 20 required, aside the 200.
But for the 200 feet, this is a fully conforming...
So my only other, I don't want to say issue, but what I would like to see at this point, and is maybe our deck, where the market counts laid out, it is busy street, we don't have here, there's a lot of traffic, it's going to be back, you know, it's going to be back.
They've actually been submitted to the township and approved.
Hold on, I still have a problem with the resolution, I would like to see what the resolution talks about, and really, what the intent over here, what's going on over here. You know, it's not just what you say that, so 100%.
It might be like that, or something.
Okay, while you guys discuss it...
Does anyone else want to say something?
With your situation like this, with some... Would the applicant, should say this would be turned down, because they're not going to let it go?
Right.
Would this be grounds for that school to appeal?
Sure. The grounds, whether they'd be successful, I can't tell you. Yeah, they're alleging that the town, a series of errors, the town made some of the errors by believing this was in the other zone. Apparently, they, the applicant said it was in HD seven, so, but the applicant, as I understand it, made the initial mistake, but being compounded by not...
The township compounded by that going in...
But to answer Judy's question, sure, it'd be grounds for appeal, whether or not the court find that the applicant made a mistake, it's his problem.
But what is it, if a court makes a mistake like that?
Well, there's a case called Hill, there's a case called Hill versus Borough of Easttown, which is about 25 years old. On that one, zoning officer made a mistake which would have required a setback issue, as I recall. And in Easttown, these are very fact-sensitive cases. On that case, the court ruled that, yeah, this one, the variance should have been granted, because that was clearly the building inspector or the zoning officer that was arguing which stated, by the way the lot was set out and therefore created a variance.
And where was the link up to, when they caught it? Was the building built?
Building was built.
There's a big difference, you mean, that the whole is putting in...
Something against the applicant, and once that variance was placed, they started to construct, to...
The case is fact-sensitive, as I just said.
For all we know, they have bought, it's a property based on this, that's also hardship.
Maybe the township should reverse the oversight, I don't know. Reverse the exercise, I don't know. Because that's probably an issue with the resolution, so we can understand really what the township really wanted, what it wanted to do. Because the resolution really is, that's really open space, and it's open space. All right, let me off to the public. Anyone in the public who wants to be heard on this room, please step up. Appeal number 3978, you have to construct.
Mr. Chairman, if, I'm gonna ask you a question. If you want us to come back with the other, with the other resolution, we're willing to work with you and.
Then we can just do this once.
We'll go back, we'll get.
I would definitely feel more.
If that's something you're indicating you don't wanna vote until you get.
Well, the only thing is, Chairman, I know there's some public here who may want to testify.
So let's hear from the board when they wanna testify, and then you'll come back. It'll be under deliberation when you come back with the resolution. I will understand the facts. We'll have to think into the public at that point because you're.
Well, that's not my point.
You're doing testimony, right? Jerry?
Let's have the, let's have the public testify there.
Okay. Anyone in the public wanna be heard? Please step up.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, you have a God?
I affirm.
Just give us your full name and spell your last.
Yitzchak Goldsmith, G-O-L-D-S-M-I-T-H.
And your first name, I'm sorry?
Yitzchak, Y-I-T-Z-C-H-A-K.
Thank you.
Okay, first of all, there's a lot of, I'm sorry? 87 Finchley Boulevard. Again, I'm not saying anyone did anything on purpose or not, but obviously with the atmosphere now with coming for variances, almost every other house along Route 9, I'm sure you're familiar with the Henry Birch, all them came and asked for that 200-foot variance. So surprised that a professional engineer has been doing this for 20 years, and Brian was on one of them himself on Henry Street, wouldn't remember that you needed such a variance. How it got to the township is a different story, but maybe it was a legitimate error of oversight. Regarding the timeline, I'm just curious to know when the footing was put in and the bricks delivered in comparison of when you were notified of the issue. Do you have a date when it was delivered?
Mr. Goldsmith, I think we'll, we'll make note of that question. Why don't you indicate what else you have concerns about, and we'll have him answer that question rather than taking time away from.
No problem. Okay, second issue, I mean, it's a, it's a general issue with the smart growth plan Brian always quotes, I don't believe is ever really adopted. That's a separate legal issue as well. The third issue is this street. I don't know if you're familiar with Finchley Boulevard. It's a very busy street right now. We've had multiple accidents. My son was in an accident. Buses cannot get through, especially that area now, which wasn't mentioned. There's a New Jersey Transit plus a bus that goes to Manhattan that leaves from that corner, and people park up and down that street. And therefore, you're taking away all those people parking there. They would park further up closer to Route 9, which is a major issue. Again, there've been multiple accidents there. We had someone who was recently killed there the other night on a Friday night. Obviously, it wasn't due to traffic, it was a Friday night. But it's a very dangerous intersection. The back, the buses cannot get in. It's quality of life issue. Now, everyone understands that he got his building permit legitimately, however, and he knocked it down, and to leave it vacant isn't fair necessarily to him. Putting up a single will already diminish the amount of things on the use there, and plus every single family comes with a basement, so you're already doubling the original density. I think we'd be okay putting something there, but a duplex means you're basically eradicating the entire street parking. Almost nobody actually parks in the double four-way driveway because it's not convenient, which means that those cars will be parking on the other side of the street, and then you're taking away those. So it's just gonna exacerbate a very, very height. Again, once we fix Route 9, the other issues, that's fine. But the way Finchley is right now, it's a very, very dangerous street, especially once other duplexes were built since then. Those people park already on the street. It's a very hazardous area for the children. As, so the tentile law, obviously, we can argue, but even asking for a variance on a D-variance, back on Price versus Chicheia Capital in 2008, it actually went through the appeals court, and the final verdict of the appeals court was that in order to grant a D-variance, it has to be something that's very specific to this piece of property. It's irregular shaped, it's the wetland, something like that. But something at the next property has the exact same hardship, let's say in R40, and no one in their right mind builds an R40, so we have to give it to them, break it down to R20 or R15. But if the next guy has the same exact issue, it's illegal and it's spot zoning to actually grant the D-variance if the next property has the same thing. So being that across the street next door would have theoretically the same things based on case law, that probably is not gonna be allowed, if it ever went to that far. But we have a standing case law in that respect as well. Again, those are really the concerns, that's why the neighborhood's all here, is it's a safety issue. Again, we feel bad, we understand that the process went the way it went, but again, please verify the timeline. I think there was almost nothing in the ground when he was aware of it. They quickly put in the footing to say, we have something firm in the ground. Again, we can verify that. And, you know, I can show you dates that the footing was put in to show you things of that nature, we can confirm.
Well, do you have proof as to when the footing, you're in Rose, you confirmed, when were they put in?
On July, January 11th. You wanna know?
2017.
2017, correct.
I'm sorry, 11th or 27th?
11th. I can tell you right now. I took a pic, video of it putting, put in. I have a video of it being put in, if you wanted, but that would verify on the phone. But it's just, the bottom line is, it's a very dangerous intersection. Come on any day of the year, the cars are packed up. In the morning, the buses cannot get through. They have people park their cars there for the Jersey Transit, we're taking away those spots for them. We can argue back and forth, the tentile law, currently the way it is, it's just, I, just very dangerous, and it's something that we all fear for. You know, again, someone died there, my son was in an accident there, other, my neighbors have been in accidents there. You know, how many more variants do we have to do on a very busy construction street, of residential street? How much more blood has to be shed?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Lanery, before the next person comes up, do you agree that the footing would be put in on January 11th?
I have the builder here. He's not, but we will put on the record that from the date the stop work order was issued, no work was done.
And what date was that?
What were you saying? When the stop work was issued, there was no foundation in the ground?
No, no work was done. No further work.
No further, when the issue, when the stop, and that was issued sometime late January.
All right, so apparently that was issued on January, well, before January 20th.
Well, the stop work, we're representing.
I do have a few days.
Am I talking you to a manager?
I have.
The question, Mr. Professor, was the foundation.
I have the builder here. He says, he could check back in his records, he doesn't know exactly the date. It was around, it was all before the stop work order was issued. And I could put him on, I could represent that, or I could swear I'm in, and he will testify the same thing. No work was done after the issuance of a stop work order.
I understand that. Question, please.
I understand. What date was issued? He has to go back in his records. It was very easy to find out, but I don't have that information. He doesn't have it on him.
All right. The actual stop work, when is aware of the problem? Excuse me.
Thank you.
No problem.
Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, you have a God?
I do. Sylvia Haggenfeld, H-A-G-E-N-F-E-L-D.
H-A-G-E.
N-F-E-L-D. Haggenfeld, like Haagen-Dazs, just more delicious.
Your first name, please, Haggenfeld.
Sylvia, S-I-L-V-I-J-A. 1351 Monmouth Avenue. What I have to say is in general, may I speak then? Thank you. Actually, my husband said I should tear this up. My husband said I should tear this up because it's, because it's obvious, no one cares about the environment. But I can't do that. I have to speak up. So this is what I have to say. I have figured out why everyone is so eager to live in Lakewood. No one is dying here. Is it not a Jewish tradition to plant a tree in honor of a deceased person? So where are the trees? Are you planning to eliminate every tree in Lakewood? It certainly seems so. A few years back, a few weeks back.
Excuse me. Thank you. Go ahead.
A few weeks back, we buried a magnificent specimen of a raccoon. It had been looking for a shelter on our property. Six trees had been cut down on the next street, with eight more destined to be cut down on the adjacent property, one about 200 years old. What is wrong with you? Trees are nature's masterpieces. In wartime, people have sacrificed their lives to preserve cultural masterpieces. In New York, trees are nurtured, measured, preserved. Over here, they're destroyed. People should not be permitted to do as they please on their property. You should instruct them to build around trees. If they cannot or wish not, then Lakewood is not the place for them to be. Rules should be implemented promptly and enforced. The environment affects everyone, animals and humans alike. I am Latvian. We have this folklore. It goes like this. Children take their parents when they're all deep into the woods and leave them there to die. So this man was taking his father to the woods. He took his small son along. As they were leaving, the boy called out to his father, wait, you forgot to take the sled back. I shall need it for you when your time comes. This fate will not befall you, for there will not be any forest left. Your fate will be tossed aside by uncaring relatives in a nursing home facing a cement wall from your wheelchair, feeble in body and mind, wishing you had stopped the scrape of the environment. Wake up. That day will come for you, sooner for some than others. And now that I have presented you with a wisdom of truth, I bid you all a good night.
Anybody else in the public?
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I do. William Hobd, 30 Schoolhouse Lane. My only objection is that, here we go, it's a, we wanna build within the 200-foot Route 9 buffer. After all, the pleading is going on to widen Route 9, in the hopes that someday in maybe your lifetime, it will be done. Probably not in mine. We have to keep that clear. And variances like this should not be granted. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Louis.
Raise your right hand.
I affirm to say the whole story.
And give us your full name.
Louis Schwartz. Louis, L-O-U-Y-S. Address 16 Finchley Boulevard. It's right next door, 16, 1616.
This is 16?
Uh, 16, 18, I'm sorry. Space that.
Where, whereabouts is that?
It's right next door. Right next door.
Which side?
The side towards Finchley.
Towards the night?
No, away from the night.
Away from the night.
So I'm right next door. I moved in there, and it's beautiful, black, a bunch of duplexes. And it was right next door to me, there was that green dilapidated house.
It was an old?
Old dilapidated, the junky house. Real old junky house. And as I see that they started doing construction, I was very excited. They're gonna put in a nice duplex. And I was very excited that it's gonna be uniformed with the whole, the whole block, the whole, the whole strip. It's a bunch of duplexes, putting in another duplex, and be more neighbors, and it's gonna be very nice. Regarding to the traffic area, the issue you brought up with people parking for Jersey Transit, I never seen any cars, people parking there and taking the bus. There's no, there's no interesting. Regarding traffic, there's a problem. You know, the bus is coming and going. I see, I see the only way of fixing that is with putting a light at the corner. And that accident that happened a couple of weeks ago, I was there. It happened at night, it was across Route 9, had nothing to do with, with, with the traffic on this block. It was, it was, it was very dark at night, it's actually a problem of street lights. Finchley's a very dark street, which I think they should put in lights. I've spoken, I've spoken to the township about that. But regarding to this project, I'm very pro, I'm on the neighbor, and this issue of having commercial right next door to my house, I'm actually not too happy about that. That's, that's, you know, I would, I would like to have residential. When I bought the house, there was two residential houses right after my house. So I didn't think I'll be, I'll come on borderline residential, residential commercial, which that would depreciate my value of my house. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I affirm.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold up hands, sir. Raise your right hand. Put your lefty.
I had a gum in this.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I affirm.
And give us your full name.
Schley McLean.
Show your last name.
K-L-E-I-N.
E-I-N, thank you.
The board might not have a choice, and they have to approve this application. And a lot of times, I don't agree with Brian, but over here, he's making a point, and he didn't elaborate enough on it, so I wanna just say the way it is. This application was approved by the engineering department. The engineering department made a mistake, and they approved this, and we have it.
May I interrupt, Chairman? What Mr. McLean is saying is incorrect. What was approved by the engineering department is an administrative zero-lot line application that assuming the duplex is permitted to be built, would simply allow for two fee simple orders. The subdivision in question never went from either board, and it has no bearing whatsoever on whether a duplex can or should be built here.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I respectfully disagree with him.
Excuse me, sir. Are you an engineer?
I'm making my statement. I didn't ask you to interrupt me. I was not asking a question, if anybody realized. I was just making a statement.
Go ahead.
And my statement is actually to support this application because of the mistake that was done. And it was done by our engineering department. He was supposed to write in his review letter exactly if it's supposed to go to the board, not supposed to go to the board. He was supposed to look if it's 200 feet, not on 200 feet. We, we found out recently, a lot of sidewalks are missing in Lakewood, a lot of roads are missing in Lakewood, and it came for this board. This board approved it. They didn't know that it was missing on the site plan. I confronted Abe Halbistam once with this problem. I confronted other zoning board members with this problem. I confronted the zoning officer with this problem, that there's a lot of times when the site plan comes, it's missing the sidewalk, the applicant is not asking for a waiver, and then the board approves the site plan without knowing that waivers was required or variances, and site plan oversees, and the engineering department continues whitewashing it and approving it because they don't wanna discover, that nobody should discover this mistake. So this applicant was also misled, and, and this applicant, I know the applicant. He is not from these guys that have influence, as I came up once in the, the engineering department, and somebody gave them a Dunkin' Donuts. I don't know if he knows even how to do it. He's not, he doesn't have influence in the, in the township committee. He's an individual that is trying to make his ends meet, and he got misled by this problems of the engineering department that continues happening. I just wanted to elaborate on what Brian said, that he has hardship because of the engineering department messing it up. Thank you.
And I'm quite a respectful, Chairman. This issue has nothing to do with the engineering department. There are communications between the applicant's professionals and the zoning officer and our office that that gentleman is not aware of.
We, we, we all understand that. It was simple error of the township, I give you a golden permit.
Yes, sir, go.
So what is this?
Raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes, I affirm.
Give your full name and spell your last.
Yeshaya Pollak, P-O-L-L-A-C-K.
Is that your first name yet?
Yeshaya, Y-E-S-H-A-Y-A. One.
Pollak. And your address?
127 Clear Drive.
Clear?
Clear, C-L-A-I-R-E.
17.
Okay. I just wanna make two points. First off, with the issue with the traffic on Finchley, once the duplexes were built, people do park on the street. They were given four spots, but I guess it's inconvenient to always have to back out. And when we have people parking on the street, we can't get two cars at one time coming through. So it's very difficult, it's very difficult now that people are parking down the street when the buses come, especially in the morning and afternoon, it's like you're playing tat, So it's very difficult, it's very difficult now that people are parking down the street when the buses come, especially in the morning and afternoon, it's like you're playing tat, it's like you're going through trying to come in, out, in, out, in, out. It's very difficult. The last person said he doesn't see a problem with traffic, he lives at 18, which is the end of the block. Those of us that live further into Hartstone, it's very, it is difficult to come in and out all the time. And so it definitely is an issue. My second point is with the, the first person I mentioned, stop order and whatnot. The planning, Ally, I believe her name is, from the planning department was made aware of the problem in the beginning of January. We have a copy of email from her, January 6th, that says that she contacted the builder and made them aware that there's an issue. The stop work order, we don't know when it was issued, but they poured the foundation on this, the footings on 11th, which is five days after they were made aware of the problem. So we can show you a copy of the email, you can go to Ally and ask her for a copy of the email, I'm sure she saves emails.
Can I clarify something, Chairman? Sure. I'm looking at some email chain that I have in here. There was an email that our office received from Mr. Goldsmith on January 18th, saying the foundations were being poured. So I think there may be a mistake in terms of exactly when their, Mr. Goldsmith's email to, including our office, said that they were being poured the day of January 18th. Oh, but Mr. Pollak said that the-
I have no idea when the foundations were poured, I want to clarify that. But I said that we have a copy of the email from Ally that's saying that she made the applicant aware, January 6th, of the problem, that there's a potential problem. I don't know when the stop order work was issued.
When the question was brought to the planning board administrator's intention, we went back to the zoning officer and to the applicant's professionals, saying, this has been raised, is this a report, is this not an issue? I believe the final answer came down in around January 20th, that same day, they, they were directed stop work.
Right.
The email I have from Mr. Goldsmith, which was part of the inquiry chain, indicated that the foundations were poured January 18th. But that's what-
My point just was, they were aware there's an issue, and they still chose to go ahead without, and spend money to pour the foundations without clarifying if the issue is a problem or not. It would seem practically before spending the money, they should have made sure it will or will not be a problem before spending the money. Appears they wanted to start the construction, and then come ahead and say, look, we started the construction. That's my point. And I think a very fair compromise would be to give a single-family house. We understand maybe there were issues with the township approved it, maybe it's not their fault, I have no idea. We think a fair compromise would be a single-family home on the lot, not a duplex.
Thank you. Anyone else? If someone else woke up. Terry, if the issue with stop work or if just what the issue was raised, does meaning can't work on it?
The issue that was raised was a determination after back and forth, including Fran. Does this, does not require conditional use variance relief? Fran's interpretation was issued on the 20th. Once that determination was made, we directed the stop work.
Correct. But until the next stop work, he's allowed to put it in, put it in, until that January 20th. Even though the issue was brought up, everyone to say something.
They were-
I think what Mr. Pollak was getting at is that, I don't dispute for this gentleman, is that the builder was aware there was an issue as of January 6th, and then on the 18th, poured the foundation. So it was aware that, here. I'm sorry. I think that was-
Jerry, if there is no stop order, a lot of, or the thing is, regardless of being aware or not of the issue, correct?
Yes, but that's my guess, the issue. Yes.
Guys. You mean to say that it goes to the amount of the hardship?
Yep, exactly.
Claiming that there's a hardship, knowing that you're gonna have to go before the zoning board and say, I have a hardship because I poured the foundation.
That's what I think the witness was getting at.
Correct.
Which is a legitimate concern, issue.
Correct. Yes. Okay.
Sir, I'm sorry. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to Delta Holter?
Yes, I do. Yecheskel Frenkel.
Oh, your last name?
F-R-E-N-K-E-L.
Address, sir?
36 Finchley Boulevard.
I am actually, I'm here to support the application, due to looking at, I do agree that there's a traffic problem on the block. I am looking at commercial versus a duplex. I think commercial will just add to the traffic problem, not to reduce the traffic problem. Obviously, a single-family home would be, you know, might be the best, but assuming that, you know, you're talking about residential and commercial here, I'm here to support residential. Another reason why I'm here to support residential is, I think, commercial will bring a greater risk to the, to safety of the children in the block. I think if you want to, if the, if the, everyone here who's here to, who's trying to support for the, to clear the traffic problem, I think they should come to our, that end blocks in the neighborhood, that, that on the, I believe on the tax map, is a street to be opened, but they're not here because, because that would bring a safety concern to their, to their children, which I hear that. So that's why I'm here also to say that I put all, just as they put priority to their safety, children first, I also put priority to safety first before the traffic problem. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to Delta Holter?
I do. Robert Salter, S-A-L-T-E-R, 2 Maplehurst Avenue. 2 Maplehurst Avenue. I'd just like to say, I mean, there's been many mistakes made in this town over the last couple of years between master plans, mistakes at boards, the members and stuff that have done, and some been corrected, some haven't. So, but rather than go and continue to not correct the problem, if you have something that's marked, that they, the full implication is that if they widen Route 9-
I just got, where are they gonna?
I'm sorry. If they widen Route 9, that they need that space. If they want to put commercial stuff in there, then that's the township's right. But there's no commercial going in there right now. There's nothing planned, obviously. So I think you should listen to the first gentleman and the other gentleman that were more concerned about the traffic safety. And I don't know if the board still makes site visits. I know years ago, I had a problem with a deck, and two of the board members actually came to my house, walked across the deck, looked at it, and said, it's really nice, I lucky, I was luckily to get it approved. But if they do go make site visits, take the time to see what the traffic's like in those areas. There's a lot of growth going on in Lakewood, there's obviously no consideration to infrastructure, to widening streets, putting in lights, putting in stop signs, putting in no parking signs. It's just, it's, sometimes it gets just mind-boggling. And I think that the board should take that time to go to these different areas, spend some time to sit there and look at the traffic. There's certain times of the day, I know where I live, between 9:00, 9:45 in the morning, forget it, Cross Street is dead. In the afternoon, the same thing, between people picking up their kids and dropping school buses and everything, it's just, you don't plan to go on Cross Street. So I support the two gentlemen that were concerned about the traffic in that neighborhood, and that they would rather leave it as is, you know. Unfortunately, the gentleman poured his footings, that's, you know, like you said, mistakes are made. Sometimes you get bit. So it's unfortunate that that happened, but I really think the board should take into consideration the safety and protection of these neighborhoods, and the kids and the people that live there. So that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Please step up. Sir, do you swear or affirm to Delta Holter?
I affirm.
And could you give your full name and spell your last?
Michael Weinberger, W-E-I-N-B-E-R-G-E-R. And I guess the next question's address, 28 Finchley. Okay, so I, first time I've had one of these meetings, it sounds like everyone has an agenda. Traffic is an issue. I don't think the last two duplexes on the strip that can be put up are gonna make it or break it. It sounds like, you know, that people are trying to take out the vengeance on the fact that my duplex went up, which it hadn't. There's another 10 of them. This Route 9 is, the one afterwards not gonna get approved, right? Because that's for sure, within the 200 feet.
Mr. Weinberger, you're the first person we've asked, I think you should try to answer back a little bit.
Sorry about that. You hear me now? Okay, sorry. Yeah, I sit at a desk, hold there, I'm used to leaning over. Okay, there's nothing else going up, this is the last two. So people are upset that something happened, and they're taking it out on the last. I don't have a stake in this, I just don't see the fairness of it. It was already approved. Making it one, making it two, it's not gonna make a difference, the traffic, that accidents that people are talking about already happened. Making it commercial, it's sure gonna make it worse. Again, one or two is gonna make a hardship for the guy who's trying to put it up, and it's not gonna help the situation. You're talking maybe, and honestly, making one or two, I think the people came here tonight, spend more time waiting to make their point, and they're gonna save between one or two people over the course of the next five years. That's all I'd say.
Anyone else? Okay, see, none opposed to the public.
Sir, if I could just, a couple of comments. The, first of all, the foundation has not been poured, but the footings have been poured. There is a big difference. The closely part, actually, in terms of which is more closely, it's the excavation versus the pouring of the footings. The excavation was all done. We're not here saying, we already have our footings in, you have to give this to us. I understand that this house was up, it's a much different story. We are saying, we knocked down the house, that's a major issue. We started the work, that's a major issue. And we happen to have poured the footings. Now, until that stop work order was issued, the builder had things scheduled and kept going. You're talking about, also, we're talking about a, it sounds like a 10-day window of a difference. The excavation, I can tell you, was done before anybody raised any issue whatsoever. You know, again, the big issue to the client is, this was all in good faith, we relied on everything. I listened to all the objectors, and everyone's saying, oh, you're within 200 feet, don't grant the variance, but give them one. I don't see the difference. We're here, you know, this is, we're 160 feet from Route 9. If, if everyone was so, you know, the variance is so bad, that it should be, don't grant anything. You know, I don't understand the rationale now saying, oh, we're gonna give them something, give them this. That array, I think, shows that their arguments aren't really about this house. If someone is to take, if Route 9 was to expand, again, they have to go 160 feet in to get to our property. There is two other properties in front of us. So, and in the end, even if they did that, our house would still be facing Finchley, and would not be directly on Route 9.
I, I, I understand that, I get that.
Okay.
I, I, I am just stuck on my, my own personal, I don't, I don't want to speak for anyone on the board. If Route 9 were to be widened, I don't need 200 feet, I need 75 feet from the center line. Or the state, right?
Yes.
Right? So I'm not concerned about widening Route 9. The township put in ordinance for, for 200 feet, that's because they didn't want to see residential homes facing Route 9. So back to my question, what is that open space, and what's the resolution when they made that subdivision? If it has nothing to do with any variance of 8,500 square feet, or any duplex permissible or added duplex is permissible in an HD7. So if we were to grant the variance of 200 feet, then, then everything else falls into place. So it's only one variance that you're looking for, which is 200 feet. If it's traffic or if it's anything else, that's a different story. But I'm looking at it, should we enforce 200 feet, or should we not enforce 200 feet? Period. That's it. And for that, I'm still wishy-washy, unless you have a resolution the way Jerry had requested.
I would also add that it's bothering me at least about the hardship becoming a hardship. I think the timeline is very, very important to the amount of the hardship. I know that's what you're pointing out, so, you know, if we're going to move this to the next, let's say, use a bit more information on the time.
That's true. And by, and by the way, one of her testimony here, that the house that was there was a gelatin, was inhabitable the way I picked it up, so it wasn't that much of a loss rushing through the house.
Well, we lost the use. We lost the residential use. We could have rehabbed that.
That's true. That's true. But it was more or less a gelatin. But that's my personal opinion. I turn over to the board and decide what you want to do. If you want to wait for the resolution to read, that resolution when that subdivision was done, if you want to make a motion on right now, I turn to you guys.
I've listened to all the testimony, everything that has gone on, thanks. And I've been here, you know, to go to the gentleman's alight. I live on Chester Street, I still live on Chester Street, I see the traffic issue. But we have to come into consideration that Lakewood today, is not Lakewood the way it was 30 years ago when I moved here. Okay, there's a lot of buildings, a lot of structure, but it's not only in Lakewood. If you go up Route 9, and you go into Tom's River, you'll see brand-new townhouses on one side of Tom's River, on the southern side, on the northern, western side, and you'll see single-family homes on the eastern side. Okay, so Lakewood is not the only town that's building. Okay, New Jersey's building. If you hear what the, what the governor's saying, you hear why they did the smart road plan, is so that they can do, build smart roads where houses are needed. And fortunately, in these areas where more and more commuters are moving from the city because they can't afford it, they feel that commuting to New York is a lot more easier living here than, or within the New Jersey area, and commuting to New York is cheaper than actually trying to buy either up north or New York itself, because it's cost prohibitive. And we try to do our best when we sit here and look at situations like this. Now, in a situation where, I don't think the hardship was caused by the builder, the hardship was actually caused, in my opinion, when the town said, okay, here, go ahead and build it, it's okay, go ahead and do it. Okay? Any builder that has that information is gonna go, just like the gentleman before us, and go build this house. Now, did he make a mistake? Sure he did. Okay, we as a board have to look at the considerations, all right? Unfortunately, traffic, whether it's in Lakewood, or New Jersey as a whole, has become a problem. It's not just in Lakewood, the accidents just don't happen in Lakewood. Yeah, accidents happen all over New Jersey. Look at the parkway the other day, that they had a major accident, that closed a parkway down. Okay, and I was coming from work, it was a nightmare. All right, so you can't look at, you know, you try to look at situations, but we're trying to look, I'm trying to see what's better for the community. Living on this area, living on Finchley Boulevard, and see what's been done, okay? That open space that they have is always an atrocity. Okay, cars parked there, they're not supposed to be parked there. There's always dirt there, there's always garbage. I live and I, and I stand on that corner to see what's going on, which right across the street from the shopping center that's there. Okay? That shopping center has changed hands many times to try to improve it. And I hate to say, but the reality is, it's became better since the owners came in and tried to fix the area up. Okay? The same shopping center, you look at a shopping center that's right on the corner, forget about 100 feet, it's right on the corner of Chester Street and Route 9. Okay? That, they have no parking there. Okay? A car could park, if you park in front of the stores, you park right into the street. Okay? The same thing you have with the cross-town shopping center, they're trying to cross the street from there. Okay? Same scenario. All right? So here's a situation where we're having a house that's being built, a duplex, that's close to 200 feet, to me, 160 feet and 40 feet is close to 200 feet. That's already been granted and approved. It's not the builder's fault, and I'm sure if they would have told him, well, you can't build it, at the time, he would have never taken the time to knock that house down. Okay? This is a house that has already been built, that I don't think is going to hurt the community at all, or the Route 9 widening. Okay? Traffic, reality is not gonna be considered in my case, because traffic is gonna be a problem throughout the state, it's not just in Lakewood. Okay? During certain times of the day, you know, during the school days, when there's school hours, between 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock, it's a nightmare, any township you go in, like in, in the state of New Jersey, it's not, just not Lakewood. Okay? I lived throughout the whole, you know, I traveled a lot of the state. I know that there are a lot of times that you go out early, and you're gonna get stuck in traffic. Okay? I don't see any detriment in letting this builder continue to build that house. That's only, that's close to 200 feet away from, from Route 9, that's not gonna affect the traffic one way or the other, or have any major issues. So I'm definitely for the continuation and, you know, finishing this particular project.
Okay. No. Jerry, what do you recommend? Do you want to wait to be there, resolution?
Well, no, I, I, we're gonna accept, I would think you want to accept the representation, which we'll check for the next 30 days. The testimony is that the resolution says it's open space. Now, the resolutions you always adopt are based upon the testimony of the applicant that is correct, and if it's not, then you have to come back. So my suggestion would be that if you prepare to vote, oh, and assuming for the sake of the discussion, that you vote in favor of this application, I'll get the resolution within the next 30 days. If it doesn't say open space, then we'll have another talk.
Or can we see the intent on the open space in the resolution, could that make a difference? Open space or不开 space? And that's my only question, is what did, if there's open space, if you can see anything more, more clear of what the township really wants.
That's you. So, Mr. Chubb.
I, I, I agree with the chairman, I think, I think the intent of the township and, and what happened there in the past would make a difference. Also, if this were to, I mentioned when it does to a vote, I would like to see more parking on the actual property, so, so they can, so they can be, that the basement people will not be, you know, on the street, so, whether he's gonna make it happen, or maybe to get a roundabout, or an apple, or make a K turn out, so they're not backing out while cars are pulling over the line. I would like to see something like that.
You want to see something there?
Yeah, I tend to agree with my associate sitting next to me. We should vote on it and, and wait 30 days, see if it come up with a resolution. If we have 160 feet, we have houses to be united by this action, so I don't see a resolution.
That's why, you know, I, I have to agree with what Obie said, I just want that he can't get a clear understanding about the open space and about the 100, 200 feet township. That's all, that, that, that was my only concern. I think what Obie said is actually exactly correct.
And, and the applicant. And the applicant would be.
When I, when I read the resolution and I see that there is some other spin in there, maybe it'll change, it'll, it'll change the whole picture, and that, that's my only concern.
And the, the applicant is certainly willing to work with the township engineer to make the parking in accordance with. In accordance with your comments.
Jerry, if you just, you know, what, if, if, when it does come back, I'd like to see, you know, why, why, why do you need the actual driveways so that you can see up in the neighborhood basement and it's not actually a corner? And then possibly your K-turn or an apple, where they don't have to be backing out, you know, what's the worst?
We're willing to work to do the best shot possible.
With whatever room is left on the property.
Do you have the room to put K-turns in trucks? Have you looked at that?
I, I, I have not looked at that, but the.
Don't commit to something.
But, but I'm saying is, is the applicant will do whatever is possible with the room remaining on the lot. Subject to the board engineer's approval that we did whatever was possible.
We don't know at this point whether or not you need to.
Right.
Let's, let's decide, let's decide if you're gonna vote, if you're gonna hold or vote.
So, then, then in that case, I will use a motion unless you guys decide to hold off. If you guys decide to hold off, then I'll say, if you want to hold off, if you want to move forward for a vote, let's move for a vote. So.
I make a motion to vote for this approval, and going for the recommendations of vote, going for the, I'm making a vote, vote.
Vote for.
I make a motion to vote to approve this use, provided that they work with the engineer and get this done. Again, I don't believe that this is the applicant's fault. I don't think it's anybody's fault, I think 160 feet, and I think that it's conducive to that neighborhood, and it's not going to change, it's actually gonna continue with the continuation of what that neighborhood affected.
Okay, I'm motion for Obie Gonzalez, second, from Mayor Gillis. And a second, your vote, please.
Mr. Gillis.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Nappali.
Yes.
Mr. Vivia.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes, for the township board.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Albers.
Yes. Good night, good night, good luck.
Thank you.
I would be taking a 10-minute break. When we come back, we have a deal in 4009, actual enforcement.
It's connected, well, it's like, I think it's a part of the smart.
That was easy, it's like, no.
I always want to make sure.
But it's actually, it's actually.
I would see the part that's first. This is the. I'm talking. Yeah. It's. 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 I understand the change of person. It's great. You know, it's. You want that? You want that? To get that, like. It's. 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 We won't have to have a. [laughing] I know, I know. You don't have confidence. It's nice for your independence. Or, or when your family's. I know, I know. You don't have confidence. It's nice for your independence. Or, or when your family's. I guess I listen to the voice. Don't we have it on yet, Jeff? Oh, it's fine. I think I stopped having to party at 4:50.
Push, 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 push. Push, 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 push. Push. Come, 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 come. Come on, come on. Nice. Yes. Okay. Who's Jerry?
Strike.
Case, Mark Ruffey.
No, we're not doing Mark Ruffey's.
Yes, we are. We are. Yes, we are. Drake, Joshua Schwartzman, Mark Ruffey's.
Yes.
I should see that. Uh. Ice, ice. You're ready to not.
Okay, field number 4009, Joshua Schwartzman.
Joshua Schwartzman, 209 sec.
Could you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, say it all together?
Yes, I do, I affirm.
And could you give us your full name and spell your last?
Joshua Schwartzman, S-C-H-W-A-R-T-Z-M-A-N. I would like to pass the professional testimony to Glenn.
Jerry, could you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, say it all together?
I do.
Give us full name and spell your last.
Glenn Lines, L-I-N-E-S, professional engineer, professional planner. Uh, we're here tonight requesting a use variance for an undersized duplex lot and sides, side yard setback variances. Uh, the lot we're in question is, uh, okay, sorry, is, uh, Lot 19, block 762. It's a lot that fronts on Cedar Bridge Avenue. It is the last, it's actually one of the last lots that actually front on Cedar Bridge. The lot immediately to our east is Lot 901 and 902, also has a duplex that fronts on Cedar Bridge. The neighbor, our lot is, we're requesting variance for, is 9,299 square feet. So, we're at 93% of the 10,000 square feet required. The lot next door got a use variance also, just because the lot, odd lot shapes and the way the lots were cut up, they were at 9,500 square feet. So, we're just slightly under what the neighboring lot. 200 square feet. I, 2%.
Glenn, um, could we review your application as I had a fun, our December 27th review? It appears to us that on Lot 19.02, you're only providing three off-street spaces?
I, I hadn't gotten to that yet, but yes.
So, that.
We have four, we show four off-street parking spaces. We do have to go to Ocean County to get our driveways and our access approved, so, we, we intend to provide four, uh, four spaces. Uh, if not, we would not be able to have a, according to the ordinance, we wouldn't be able to have a basement apartment. We may have to make the building a little, a little, a little shorter, rearrange the parking, but really, the parking and access and the number of spaces we can get is, a lot of it is all up to Ocean County, and we do have a meeting scheduled with, with them in a few months, or not a few months, a few weeks, to work out the parking arrangement to get our four spaces.
So, I, and, and as you may, you sit here today, is the three off-street parking.
There are, no, there's, there's four shown, one is just, one's difficult to get to.
Well, I, I, we see three, Glenn. That, that, that's a.
Assuming we see three, and that's approved this evening, then they would not be allowed a basement unit.
That'd be fine, if, if we can get the fourth, we would have to come back and, and get the ordinance, the resolution amended to get us to.
You have to make it.
Have a basement.
To get it amended.
Correct. We, we understand.
I see on the application, on the variance map, he's writing to you here, uh, 44.
If you just, that's what it says on the known schedule, Chairman. If you look at the, at the existing permit plan, or sheet number two, which is an attachment design. If you look at the layout that's depicted for proposed Lot 19.02, it's three spaces. Where do you get access to?
One, two, one, two, three. The fourth quarter, I'm here on an angle.
Yes. It is there, that's what I said. It, it's there, but I don't understand how you access it.
No.
Pack it up, just show it on paper, you're not gonna utilize it.
Exactly. It's for you.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, he, he drew it on paper, but he's not gonna be able to utilize it.
And that was what I had indicated, we, we do have to go to Ocean County to get our access, because right now.
Okay.
Our, we, we have to provide a, a way to, for the cars to come out headfirst. You can't back out onto the county road. Uh, so, again, um, so, I went over the variance for the lot area. I'm sorry, I keep doing that, I apologize. Uh, we're also requesting two si, uh, side yard setback variances, lots very narrow, uh, requesting five feet and five and a quarter feet. That leaves us a 25 and a half foot duplex. If we went down to the seven feet, we would be down to about a 23 and a half foot wide duplex, which is really not, uh, not very good. The board's been aware that, you know, we've been trying to keep to 20 feet with minimum width on a, on a duplex. So, we are requesting the side yard setbacks. The, you know, I, in my opinion, the variances we're requesting are, are, are small in nature. We'll put our air conditioning and our trash in the rear, so we'll have, uh, open side yards. As far as the lot area variance, again, it's, we're not much less than what's required. Just wanted to try and keep the application short.
Okay. I just have two comments.
Yes.
You said that ninety-two hundred is the minimum from ninety-five hundred. Oh?
No, 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 compared to the variance that was re...
But ninety-two hundred is not the minimum compared to ten thousand where it's supposed to be. So let's not go to ninety-five hundred and say, now, give me ninety-two. The next guy's going to say, give me ninety-one, the first one's going to give you five thousand, eighty-seven, and then eighty-seven, and then give me six thousand. So we're going to keep them on the, so let's stick to the ten thousand. Off our way from ten thousand square feet, it's not that much of a de minimis, like you're saying.
Correct.
Number, number two, um, your side yard setbacks, um, five and a half feet, five and a half feet. He didn't have a reason on why I should give five and a half feet, um, on, on, on either side. I don't think five and a half feet should be, uh, wide enough for, for approval. That's number two. And number three, the third parking space, uh, P doesn't look like it's going to be, uh, is going to work or, or will happen to you like, yes, you drew it out very nicely on paper, but at the end of the day, it doesn't look like it fits in there, it looked like you put a square peg, you tried to squeeze it, weight it over there.
You also have my escaping, you have my escaping that's proposed in that space.
Yeah, and last, the last, I think, great on this.
They're proposing three straws.
Yeah, I think it's just, you do have very nicely, you know, favor it. These are my three issues, um, with, if you can help me, um, explain that a little better, uh, we could talk about it. The rest I can overlook, the fellow workers.
I, I just want to make a comment, I don't see how it's physically possible for the cars to back, uh, not to be backing out onto Cedar Bridge.
Keep, keep moving up? We have to hear from the other recording.
I don't, I don't see how it's physically possible for four cars in nineteen oh one to get out without, um, without backing out. I mean, the car on the, the, uh, the left, the bottom left, could only turn by flipping the car that's, um, on the right, on the right side. It'll only make that turn. Assuming, of course, uh, that these cars are going to be all, uh, have the outages which are about, uh, the, uh, the wall.
Yes.
So I, I just don't see how it's physically possible. I know you still have to go to county to get that through, I, I just don't see how you can fit, uh, fit in this lot, um, for, for a car.
Again, we, we believe we can work something out with the county to get the four cars in there and be able to turn around. If it, you know, may entail making the house a little, little, you know, a little shallower, revising the depth of the house to be able to...
The line, so if you don't change the size of that house, you have to back. I mean, you're asking for approval for three parking lots, this four parking space. But, but you want to go to the county and hope to get four. And if you do, you're going to have to back.
Can I just, one second?
Okay.
I discussed it with my client. If, uh, if we could, we'd like to take Jerry's recommendation and the board's recommendation, uh, go to the county, see if we can work out our parking, come back and re-present the application.
So are you tabling it or are you withdrawing?
We'd like to table it.
Until you're ready to come back.
Well, until we've had our meeting with the county.
Whenever that's going to be.
Okay. I understand the applicant, I'll pardon the other applications, I understand that, and I understand the law with that.
But I think the application should be withdrawn, because I think there's going to be new plans.
Sure.
And I think that this should be just a new notice when the new plans are submitted. So my suggestion would be rather than carrying it without prejudice to the applicant, withdraw it, get it off the friend's desk, so it's... When he's ready, when he's back in, he already paid his application fee. So get the new plans and then re-notice.
That's fine with me.
That'd be acceptable. And then we would re, and then we would re-notice when we're put back on the agenda.
Good, so you withdraw it for now, when you're ready, we'll put it back on the agenda.
Correct, we'd like to, we'd like to be able to talk to the county.
No, no motion.
Okay, so there's no motion necessary?
Well, no, I think, you know, if you can attempt to withdraw, and put the other Danny's paid the application, so it's done with...
There's no motion necessary?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone that's here for the public on the...
There is, I'm sorry, there is a, I'm sorry, do you say, no?
No motion, you just withdraw it.
Now, take a motion to accept the withdrawal.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept, uh, with the draw, appeal number four zero nine?
Mr. Chairman, just, just for the applicant, I think you should revisit the whole plan. You might be wasting a lot, to look at how many variances you have, look at where it's located, look at what's happening, you might not want to waste a lot.
Okay, um, I had a motion for move to accept the withdrawal, and Mayor Galey, can I second from?
Second.
Second from to the Rivian, have a second to roll call, please.
Mr. Galey?
Yes.
The Alberson?
Yes.
The Alberson?
Yes.
The Palat, the Rivian, the Ingraham, the Talas, the...
Yes.
Yes, okay, so whenever you're ready, please come back, anyone that's here for appeal number four zero nine, Joshua Schwartzman, you'll get re-notice whenever he's back and ready to submit this application. Next, we go into appeal number four zero three, Drake Development.
Great, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer coming behalf of the applicant.
Good evening.
Uh, the property in question, I think the board somewhat familiar with, um, as the township had previously done, a, uh, rezoning the area that ended up being overturned due to a notice issue. We are before the board currently, um, with an application just for use, uh, for density based upon an R twelve, uh, zone. This is not what this where in Brian Flannery.
Flannery, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, say it all together?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner.
And just for the record, the board agrees to accept Brian's, uh, as a expert? Thank you. Brian, if you can, uh, walk us through the, and actually, let me just mark, we've pre-marked Jerry.
A one is a copy of the use variance plan that was submitted. A two is a copy of the zoning map where I've highlighted the subject property in orange, the Crystal Lake Preserve, and, and the farm on Drake Road, uh, in a green color. Uh, previously approved, uh, subdivisions from the, um, from the zoning board in pink. And then I have red asterisks for all the schools that have been developed in the area. Uh, the, the blue lines are the county roadways. As you can see, the, the property fronts on a county roadway, it fronts on Cross Street. Uh, A three is a zoning map that, that shows the property a little bigger, a, and the, the property has fronted right at the bend in, in Drake Road, which is a very strategic place, if you're going to have roads that interconnect Drake, uh, to, uh, Cross Street, so that the traffic flows better, uh, and, and that we can have development, uh, without negatively impacting the, the traffic flow and actually positively impacting it. So the application, as indicated, it's a bifurcated application. This applicant, uh, or this, uh, project, uh, was the subject of a, uh, a rezoning, a master plan amendment in April of two thousand and fourteen. At that time, the, uh, planning board said that this property, which is currently zoned R forty, should be rezoned to an R twelve B, and the R twelve B permitted single-family and duplex housing. This applicant is not asking for duplex housing, the applicant is asking for R, R twelve. Uh, the, uh, that, uh, master plan recommendation was implemented by the township. The township committee actually, uh, approved the R twelve, uh, B zoning. It went into effect, the applicant on this property started preparing plans, uh, for duplexes. While those plans were being prepared, uh, a, a neighbor that lived further down Drake Road filed an appeal. The appeal went to a judge, the judge said it wasn't noticed properly, you have to go back and do it over again. The township committee at that point said what they tend to say a lot, let's do another master plan update and, and we'll deal with it after that. So this applicant has been sitting with this property for a long time, waiting for the master plan update, which I, I hope I see in my lifetime. Uh, I, I was told a year ago it would be done in a matter of a few months, I'm being told now it'll be done in a year. But the applicant has been sitting on this property, which needs development. The plan that we submitted, we think, uh, is, is an excellent zoning opportunity for this property. The, the property, uh, certainly i- in this area, and, and most of the board members know that I, I lived in this area, and, and property in this area, uh, has been a subject of, of what the development be, should be for a long time. And, and when it was the R forty development, the only thing that developed out here is schools. And you can see on, uh, A two, uh, I, I marked that there are nine schools, I, I think there've been a couple other schools have bought property since I've made that. That's the only development that's gone in there, other than, any of the residential development has been for approvals on smaller lots. Uh, the, the Serenity Estates was approved by the planning board on, on smaller lots. They left a, a cluster open, and Serenity is on fifteen thousand square foot minimum lots. The, uh, the, the zoning board recently, uh, approved a bifurcated application on Newport, where they indicated, uh, the, the minimum lot size, they, they would approve was fifteen thousand. And, and the difference between this application and Newport is that the two thousand and fourteen master plan for Newport didn't say that it, it should be, uh, duplexes should be allowed, or that twelve thousand square foot lots should be allowed. This, this property i- is very unique in that it, it provides the access at the point on Drake Road where it, it should be provided. And it's providing, uh, lots that are consistent with the master plan, and, and actually consistent with, uh, and, and lots that are larger, uh, than, than what was approved by the township committee. So they, we, we a lot of times talk about the intent of the township committee, well, the intent of the township committee was clear. They, they adopted an ordinance, an ordinance that allowed duplexes. This applicant isn't asking for those duplexes, he's asking for twelve thousand square foot lots, and, and in Lakewood, twelve thousand square foot lot is a big lot. Most of the applications that are, that are here at this board are for duplexes or smaller lots or, or multifamily. I can't remember any, uh, applications for twelve thousand square foot lots that this board did not receive favorably. The, uh, the, when you look at this area, uh, and you look at the R forty, uh, with the exception of White Street, and White is, is its own little development, it's got, uh, private access, it, it's got some lots developed. So it, it doesn't have the same impacts that you have in this area, where you have Cross, Neiman, and White, with all those schools generating all that traffic in the morning. If this property, uh, was developed as schools, the, the traffic there would probably stop. More schools in that area, uh, would create such a, a bottleneck on the traffic, that the few residents that are left, uh, would be in much worse, uh, situation. So when we look at the, um, uh, master plan, the master plan of two thousand and seven, had the section on housing, which I was read to you, indicating that, that we need housing. Page thirty-five of the, uh, the master plan of two thousand and seven, and, and I feel that if I don't read this to you at least once a meeting, Mr. Klein is going to be disappointed. But, uh, under that section, it says it's been a tremendous residential growth in Lakewood in recent years, and for all these signs, there's no sign of abating, and the conclusion is, uh, not all of Lakewood's housing needs are met. So, so this would provide housing needs on lots that, it's my professional opinion, are estate-type lots. It's going to provide nice, single-family, uh, dwellings, which, which are greatly needed in Lakewood. It's an area that's not within the CAFRA zone, so the CAFRA zone was drawn by the state as an area that has more of an environmental impact, and, and there's a reason why the state, uh, should look over those applications. This is outside of that area. It has access to Cross Street, and I, I've spoken with the county engineer about Cross Street, and, and they have plans within the next couple of years for, uh, another widening of Cross, and, and what they're talking about is putting another lane on Cross. If the board acts favorably on this application, we will meet with the county. We will find out what type of widening we should do on our property, so we can accommodate, uh, a wider Cross Street. Whatever, uh, right-of-way dedication is needed to accommodate that widening across to our frontage, whatever needs to be done with moving the utility poles, we would incorporate that into a design. I, I know the board's not, uh, um, their, their favorite application isn't a bifurcated application, because you like to see a lot more of the details. But in this particular case, uh, the applicant has a lot of work to do to come up with the, the best design that'll provide a, a secondary, uh, connection, uh, from Drake Road to Cross, that'll provide, uh, proper access for any of the dwelling units that, that we would come back with, uh, on the, on the property. And also, uh, it's providing the sewer and water design. The schools that are, are out in this area, most of them are on septic. A, a school on septic, uh, isn't the, the ideal situation. Any of the, you know, a cafeteria or any, any facility of that nature is very problematic for a, uh, septic. This applicant would extend the sewer from where it ends at Serenity Estates, uh, extend it up to the, the project and extend it through the project, so it would come out to, uh, Cross Street, and it would provide sewer accessibility for the, the Maplehurst area. The Maplehurst area, uh, if the board remembers that application on the corner, where they approved twelve thousand square foot lots on the corner of Maplehurst and Cross Street, uh, it's an area that most of the block is representative of an R twelve type development. That's all on septic at this point, too. So this project is going to provide the benefits of, uh, providing public sewer and water. It's the, the motivation and, and the, the, the driving force on, on bringing public sewer and water further into that area to benefit these residents, the, the new residents, as well as the existing residents. If we look at the, the densities, uh, which is why we're here, it's, single families are permitted. The reason we're here is because we exceed the density that, uh, permitted by the ordinance. The R forty, which we're currently zoned, uh, allows one point one dwelling units per acre. The R twelve B that was approved by the, uh, governing body, uh, and is consistent with the master plan of two thousand and fourteen, and this isn't even the two thousand and seven master plan that governs most of the, the area. There, there was a specific master plan amendment done just for this area in two thousand and fourteen. The R twelve B would have permitted, uh, development at seven point two dwelling units per acre. The R twelve allows... Seven point two.
That's how many duplexes per acre?
Well, it's seven point two units per acre, so it, it'd be two doors. It, it would, uh, break down into three point six duplexes per acre, for, for a, a, a density of, uh, seven point two duplex dwellings per acre.
But these, these are going to be single families?
Single families. These are going to be single families. I, I'm comparing where, where the densities, because density is the, is the variance we're looking for. We're entitled to one point one.
R twelve is how many, the twelve house, or the lots, how many per acre?
Twelve thou- uh, uh, the R twelve at twelve thousand... The R-12 at 12,000 square foot, it would be 3.6.
3.6.
But, yeah, but roughly three. And we're, you know, the sketch we have, and we know we're not locked into the number of units. We know if the board acts favorably, we're not locked into any of that, but...
So correct me if I'm wrong, looking for the same amount of buildings as would have been duplexes or a single family. It was 3.6, 7.2 duplex doors, and I just looked for 3.6 single family doors. It's the same amount of building?
Same amount of buildings, but half the number of dwellings.
Doors, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, half the number of dwellings.
Correct.
And many lots will be larger than the 12,000 square foot.
Yes, yes.
That just...
What'd you say?
Many of the lots will be larger than 12,000 square foot. Just saying on a minimum.
We have lots that are on this sketch, and this is, this needs a lot of work.
Yeah, I agree with that, it needs a lot of work.
But it's an excellent starting point, and I hope you're going to agree with me on that as well.
Right, let's do a natural color.
So, by right, we're entitled to 1.1. We're looking for about three, and the master plan and the ordinance that was adopted by the town would have let us have seven. So the applicant is by no means being greedy. He's designing something that, in my opinion, as someone who lived in that neighborhood for 30 years, is something that'll fit in well, and it's the proper development of that. If you look at where it is, we're almost in Jackson. We've got Cross Street forwarding us in Jackson to the west. We've got the Crystal Lake Preserve, which isolates this to the east. We've got the industrial and the railroad tracks, which isolate it to the south. And then we have White Street, which is a residential area to the north, which is buffering Westgate, which is in an R-15 zone. So Westgate's in an R-15 zone. What we're proposing here, when you compare it to a Westgate, is...
Please don't.
It's night and day. It's night and day.
Don't move the other person.
It's night and day.
One mistake.
So what happened in this neighborhood is, the neighbors back in the 90s said, "Well, let's leave it as R-40." And that's what happened. It got left as R-40. Six schools got built, and I had told my neighbors, because we got along well, I said, "If we leave it R-40, what's going to get built here is schools. Nobody's going to build houses on 40,000 square foot lots. The property's too valuable. Schools need the land." So six schools go up, and then my neighbor started saying, "Well, maybe Brian knows what he's talking about." And I think if I talk long enough, people start to say, "Brian knows what he's talking about," and would agree. In this case, it worked. And then they approached the governing body and said, "Listen, every time somebody moves out of the neighborhood, we get a school. We don't want that anymore." The governing body held public hearings. The planning board held public hearings. And that's where the R-12B zone was born. The average lot size that we show on this sketch is about 12,500. And again, we're not looking for locking in the number of lots. We're looking for direction from this board. Hopefully, you act favorably, and then that gives the applicant the reason to go to the drawing board and come up with a plan that, when we bring it back, the board is going to say that this is the right plan for the area. Continuing in the reasons, because we have to give special reasons and positive and negative criteria, the master plan of 2007 says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. And this really is redevelopment of this area. The bigger lot was a horse farm. They have horse farms in Jackson. Horse farms in Lakewood just don't make sense. The other lot on the corner was an older house that needs to be redeveloped. And it breaks this area into a manageable size that provides for the traffic. And I know the board, on a lot of occasions, we come in and the question is, "Well, where's the traffic going to go?" Here, the traffic's going to go to Cross Street. The county recognizes it's a problem. The township is working with the county to make sure Cross Street works from Route 9 to the Jackson border, and all the way out to 528. And if Cross Street is functioning, the traffic in here is going to be very well. The problem that is with traffic in this area, and having lived there for 30 years, I know it, it's school times. If you come when the schools are either, when the children are going to school or getting out of school, the traffic's backed up at all the lights. We even have a situation now where, because some of the Lakewood families have moved to Jackson, the children still go to Lakewood schools. So we get coming down Cross Street from Jackson, we get a lot of traffic from the Jackson parents bringing their children or dropping the children off. Improvement of Cross Street to handle that flow is a problem that the county is aware of and working on it. They told me it's a two-year timeframe. Certainly, any development of this property, by the time we're really up and running, is going to be in that timeframe, and this applicant would do his part to, along his property frontage. The municipal land use law, NJAC 40:55D2, A, encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will both public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And it's my opinion, this one does it. E is promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions. And it's my testimony that the master plan and the ordinance passed by the township committee said 7.2. We're asking for three. It's my testimony that is the proper population density. So we're here for a D5 variances, which is an increase in the permitted density. And in order to do that, we have to give you the special reasons, and the special reasons, I think, for this property are very clear. First of all, we have a master plan and an adopted ordinance by the governing body that says it's appropriate. Secondly, it's very unique in that it's right at the bend in Drake Road, and it connects to a county road. We've got Maplehurst on the other side of the street, and any design we do will take that into account and make sure that there's no conflicts. And the county engineer is very vigorous on that, so that we would make sure that there's no conflicts with Maplehurst, and would actually improve Maplehurst. And Maplehurst goes right out into Jackson, so that provides, the Jackson parents that I was speaking of, they have another option on how to get there. Part of that increase in the density, or the D5 variance, is that we have to show that the variance relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance. And this is your positive and negative criteria. So when you look at the master plan and zoning ordinance, the master plan, this is consistent with it. The zoning ordinance, although it was thrown out because of the not noticing properly, it was clearly the intent of the governing body to do that. The plan that we're presenting that connects the traffic from Drake Road is certainly a benefit to the traffic. The benefit of extending the water in the sewer certainly helps us out. And I'd just like to read you, because I give my opinion a lot of times on the housing that we need and why this should be, but the planner and the planning board, in this master plan amendment of April of 2014, clearly state their reasoning. On page four, it says, "By rezoning the study area to accommodate more housing units and a larger population, the township would be making a proactive effort to accommodate its growing population, consistent with the overall objectives of the smart growth plan." So I know on the last application, I was told the smart growth plan wasn't adopted. The smart growth plan, as the board knows, was formally adopted. It was adopted by the township committee. It was adopted by the planning board as a land use element of the master plan, and it was approved by the state as well. And the current master plan update that's going on is to implement the smart growth plan into the new master plan, and adopt ordinances consistent with the smart growth plan. And once that is done, it gets sent to the state. The state says, "Yep, it's consistent with it." And then the township moves forward, and you don't have to hear me saying, "We're not doing this because of the smart growth, and we're not doing it because of a master plan update."
Can you just ask me this, Chris? What was thrown out in court, then? Was it this, um...
In court, the...
This smart growth, or this...
In court, the...
Which one was thrown out?
The R-12, the R-12...
Let me clarify my question. What was approved by the township committee? What was thrown out? And what, how did it remain? The whole...
The planning board adopts the master plan amendment. So that's what I'm reading from, is the April 2014 planning board amendment. The township committee, when they get a...
Okay, so, which said what?
It said, "For this particular area, recommend rezoning to R-12B. The standards for R-12B would based on and mimic those of the R-12A, but would add two-family duplex dwelling uses as conditional uses in the zone on a minimum tract of 120,000 square feet," which is about three acres, "and minimum lot sizes of 12,000 square feet, and public sewer would be required."
For duplex?
For a duplex.
That's 12B?
Yes.
That was the...
That was the recommendation of the master plan in 2014. The governing body took that recommendation and prepared an ordinance stating that, and they adopted the ordinance. A neighbor who did not like duplexes appealed the ordinance, and...
So what happened then?
It went to the judge, and the judge said, "You didn't notice properly. The R-12B never happened." The R-12B ordinance.
So what part never happened?
The ordinance, the ordinance never happened.
But the master plan still stayed in effect?
Yes, yes.
So they have to rewrite that ordinance, and for that, they're waiting for?
The master plan update.
And that, which is stuck in the state?
No, no, the state did their part. It's back, it's back at the... The smart growth plan was adopted by the state. Both the state and Lakewood agree on the smart growth plan. The smart growth plan that we have, and that this says, where I read to you before, it's consistent with smart growth.
Again, where's it stuck at?
Where's it stuck at? The master plan update. Because the governing body directed the planning board to update the master plan. The master plan appointed an advisory committee. The advisory committee, there's a lot of work to it. And I don't know what's going on. I'm glad I don't know what's going on, because it's a lot of work and there's a lot of scrutiny. And you could ask Mr. Klein when he comes up to say he agrees with me on this application, because I think he's going to. He could tell you more, because he videotapes those meetings. So when those meetings are done, they're going to present that to the planning board. The planning board is going to have hearings, and then based on the...
This smart growth plan, the township is working on right now?
The new master plan, yes.
Okay, fine, I'm not doing it, I'm not doing it all, but when we're still stuck over here on this piece of property, after the neighbor sued the township, where the ordinance and inrites are fell back down as an R-40, with the 2007 or 2014 master plan update that says that this area should stay a 12B?
Yes.
But no ordinance, but no ordinance was adopted to put it into a 12B?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's where it's still stuck?
That's where it's still stuck.
That's what I wanted to know.
Right. And the neighbor that didn't like the duplexes, as witnessed by the fact that he's not here objecting...
I'm not interested in that. Let me read one. If he is or isn't there, it could kill us.
Well, I couldn't care, and I'm glad he's not.
It's not my fault.
So, I'm just asking, so right now, all you really, really, you asked the township to redo the ordinance, and the township refused.
The township said, "We're going to wait till we adopt our new master plan."
Which is the same as refusing, right?
No, no, the new master plan is going to be a brand-new document.
Right, though. But the township said, "No, we're not going to redo that ordinance with proper notice to pass it and change it to an R-12."
That's correct.
R-12B, which is duplex.
Right. So the township already told you, "We're not doing it yet." And they said, "Wait until we do the master plan."
Yes.
So they didn't want to stick their necks out, and you're asking us to stick our necks out?
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not a matter of sticking your neck out. It's a matter of, the zoning board is here, and we have to show, and I can read you the municipal land use law that says, "We have to show there's special reasons. We have to show why you should approve something not consistent with the master plan. That's under normal circumstances." Here, we don't have to do that, because this is consistent with the master plan. And then we have to show you the positive and the negative criteria. And part of the positive and negative criteria are how it's going to adversely impact a master plan, which this doesn't, and how it adversely impacts the neighbors. And it's my testimony that it's a positive for the neighbors, because it brings them sewer, it brings them water, and it brings them an opening of the road, so that the traffic flows better.
But is it conceivable that the township is working on a master plan, which may say that they want to keep this area as R-40?
Anything's conceivable, but that's highly unlikely.
But we know that they're working on something, so maybe it's a little premature, but we know they're working on it. They've told you, "We're working on it," and come back to us when we're done working on it. It could be premature.
And they told us that a year ago, and it's unfair to an applicant who's owned the property for a long time, that waited, when he first acquired the property, they said, "Wait, let us do a master plan." And in 2014, they did that. And he waited, and they did the master plan, and it came out that this was their recommendation. Then they said, "Wait till we adopt the ordinances." So he waited again, and then they adopted the ordinance. Then he started developing his plan, and at that point, a neighbor filed an appeal against the ordinance, so he had to wait again. And then the appeal was processed, and when it finally got to the judge, he said the notice wasn't good. The township, "Do it all over again." So that was like in 2015, where the judge said, "Do it all over again." And the applicant went to the governing body, and the governing body said, "Well, we're going to update the master plan. Wait for that." He's been waiting since 2012. It's not fair, and if we could not present a case consistent with the municipal land use law that says the zoning board should do this, because there's powers for the planning board, there's powers for the zoning board, and there's powers for the governing body. The zoning board, in special cases and for special reasons, and assuming that the positive and negative criteria are addressed according to the municipal land use law, then the zoning board is supposed to approve it. And when you look at the positive and negative criteria, the positive criteria is bringing the sewer, bringing the water, improving the traffic, and also not letting this develop as schools. Because if this is schools, that's not a good development for this area. And I know that personally, because I live right around the corner. There's more schools there already than it can handle. And if nothing happens, and this master plan drags on another couple of years, it's probably just going to be all schools. So the negative criteria, then, would be how it impacts the neighbors. And after I give my testimony, the neighbors are going to get up. Some of them are going to say they like it, some are going to say they don't like it. Probably, it sounded like Mr. Klein, who doesn't live anywhere near it, he's not going to like this one. I'm guessing Mr. Hobday, who does live a little closer, he's probably not going to like it. But it's mainly going to be the traffic impact, and the traffic impact is Cross Street. And we would be required, when we came back, to show you, we met with the county, this is what's happening with traffic, and this is how this is going to work, and we'll provide a traffic report with a traffic engineer. And the board doesn't have to approve anything unless we come back with something that works. So this is the bifurcated application. It gives the applicant a reason to go forward and not just sell to a school. I think I had one more thing I wanted to read to you from this ordinance, the master plan amendment of 2014 on page nine. It indicates, "Though a portion of the population increase will be accommodated in the center's cores nodes..." cores nodes as described in the Smart Growth Plan, these areas are unable to accommodate all of the population increase. Thus, it's necessary to evaluate other areas of town. The master plan amendment is a result of the Township's comprehensive evaluation of the suitability of the above-described area to accommodate a portion of the Township growth. So that's the Township Planner and the Planning Board's indication that this area can accommodate that additional growth.
Are you there?
Yes.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Let's start with Perry. Perry, I've written the blogs, I've read in the papers, that the county is finally getting their act together, trying to help the traffic issue in Lakewood Township, or in Ocean County, from the all the way, from the north of Ocean County, all the way up to Lakewood, was that the place at least that really people are from? Part of these examples were that Cross Street is where they're really putting a lot of emphasis on, they're putting a lot of emphasis on ride, on transit, so on and so forth. Do you know what's going on in the county in reference to widening Cross Street? As we're somewhere that looking at wider Cross Street, that looking at attitude, and they identified it as a corridor which has to be improved? Is there anything going on around this fault?
Specifically what they're talking about? They are talking about a number of improvements. There have been communications between the county and the Township, including a number of areas, which include Cross Street.
Right.
I can also tell you that the county, a week or two ago, just indicated that they were going to hire an outside consultant to look specifically, I believe, at both Lakewood and Jackson Townships. And obviously, the recommendations that that study may or may not influence what they're doing on Cross Street. I also know that the Township hired their own consultant to also look at traffic, which may or may not include this. I know that there's been talk about Cross Street. I don't know exactly what the outcome is coming.
No one knows what the outcome is going to be, but is that...
They are talking about...
You assume that they identified it as an issue that has to get repaired?
Yes.
So we know that. If they identified it as an issue that has to be repaired, it's a question of when or a question of if, they'll do it. What would you say is?
I would assume it's when.
Okay.
I think you have to do something with all the building that's coming.
Correct.
And ultimately, that's their responsibility to make sure you have safe roadways. So I would say, yeah, they're going to do something. I can't tell you sitting here exactly what that will be or when.
Okay. You don't think, it's not something like the county was picking whatever date to do something. They're really finally moving something else up?
Oh, I think there'll be something.
So it's not a five-year-out project, it's more like a more imminent project?
When it could occur is going to be what they recommend and what funding is prioritized. I can't tell you when it should be two years, it could be five years, it could be ten. I do think something's on.
That's all I want to hear. And I actually don't want to hear it from Brian, I want to hear from our own side. Another person, I guess you. I think you did a marvelous job. But I want to hear from our own engineer in order to understand really what's going on, because there are times, you do something over here, the county does something, maybe you guys will bump heads and eat right in.
We would have something more specific from the county when we came back with our fully-designed plans, if the board acts favorably on this bifurcated application.
Okay. Now, again, this is Perry, maybe you can help answer this also. I happened to have been about a week ago, two weeks ago, in a neighborhood, Hope Hill, Van Bruin Avenue, or Hope Chapel Road. Do you know where that is? That's a beautiful, beautiful, gorgeous neighborhood. I'll be at those lots. Does anyone have any idea?
I couldn't tell you.
Is it tell you off the top? What? R-15. There are some homes there that are magnificent. There are some beautiful homes there, you know? And when you brought this application in over here, and I see those homes, I said, wow. If I could, in my mind, I was thinking, you know, if you look at those homes, one masterpiece, nice than the other, it's a competition. Who can build a bigger estate over there? So I was just thinking about that, hey, you know, if something can go on over here. What? It would, you know, it would just make sense. I do have to like the fact of here that you finally went away from a cul-de-sac, you put a really, a road through. But you couldn't, you couldn't all be swept back out, you had to put a two cul-de-sacs, right?
Well, some families like to have the cul-de-sacs for the kids to play on.
Really? Okay. I think like, wow, we had a road, we finally got one food development in here, we could have this for years without a cul-de-sac, but you had to stick to one. So that'll be my next question. What's next over here? Why can't we just put them through and have another one across thorough streets all around?
Well, certainly, that's something that the applicant could check if the board acts favorably on the application. We have the property, the property to the north is a school, so...
The property to the north.
Property to the north, which would be up here is a school. So that's not going anywhere.
Which school is it? Does anyone have the name of that school? What? Okay, go ahead. So is that to the north?
Lot 16?
Whatever, it's irrelevant. Keep on going. How about the south?
The...
Yeah.
Number, lot 28 is also owned by a school.
Okay, what's this? Forget about it.
Lot 88 is...
You need the mic. You need the mic.
Lot 88 is undeveloped, so if the board acted favorably, the applicant could certainly see if it makes sense to do something in that area, right? And then the actual layout could get improved.
So we can, it could, it could fall back.
Yes.
Because lot 88 looks like a kind of smaller lot, and actually comes with another cul-de-sac and which will be a purpose of what you're trying to accomplish by putting a cross through.
The applicant is looking to see if the board feels that what the master plan, the Planning Board suggested in the master plan, what I've advised them, makes sense for this area, whether that makes sense for this area, before he goes further. He's been in a holding pattern for a very long time, and if the board acts favorably on it, that gives him the indication that, you know, see what can happen with the whole area.
And the applicant would be willing to work to get rid of both cul-de-sacs, one cul-de-sac to make it...
To give approval, and then find out that somebody next door just wants to jam another thing in, if we can just take the whole community and put it together. I definitely feel that the schools in that area, when I drove by, there's some schools in that area that look atrocious. If we can put a housing development like I just mentioned before, it'll definitely make it a lot nicer than having these school buildings that are there, kind of, you know, more presentable.
It's a shame that I don't know what you're going to say, like you know what I'm going to say. Because if I had known you were going to say that, I would have recommended to the applicant that we included that in the project we advertised for.
No, you got me wrong. I don't mind schools there, but I'd rather it be nice, neat, full clean.
Yes, yes. And the applicant certainly will work to see what can be done better than the cul-de-sacs, what can be done with the neighboring properties, so that this whole little area, and that's basically what it is. It's an area that was rural, you know, was a horse farm, and the area off the frontages, because certainly the frontages, we all know the traffic in that area is horrendous. And if the board acts favorably on the use variance application, it gives the applicant the message to work hard and come up with the best plan, meet with the county. There's certainly a lot of work that needs to be done before we would come back with plans, and we'd have to satisfy the board with the traffic testimony, with all the information, so that you're comfortable that this will be the best development of the area.
Is the builder planning on selling individual lots over there, or, and then every builder whatever they want, is he going to do his own development?
I would anticipate he would probably want to build custom homes on all of these lots.
But on all these lots, custom homes? Because then, because I would love to see another very exclusive neighborhood.
Well, the Hope Hill neighborhood that you were talking of, that was a custom homes that were built by accurate builders.
Yeah, but everyone had the right to build whatever they want.
Yes. And it would, yes, certainly it would be the same thing. These are going to be premium lots, and there's certainly a shortage of premium lots. These lots can fit houses similar to the ones on Hope Hill, and all that would be taken into consideration, so that it would be a development that when the zoning board went past, they would say, we made the right choice on this application.
Okay. I think we, too early, I want to say.
Can I actually open on Drake Crowell?
Yes.
Yes.
Drake, you want on the floor?
Yes.
Okay. Before I go into my further question, I want to hear what the public can say about this. So the public, anyone in the public wants to be heard, please step up. Appeal number 4003.
Mr. Landry, you're right. Answer, do you affirm or tell the holders?
I affirm. Brian mentioned before about the Smart Growth Plan, that it was recommended this neighbor to be high-density. I had the privilege, one of the seniors gave me the recording of that Smart Growth Plan meeting, the public meeting that the Township held in 2009. Actually, it was in this room, the mic system didn't work, it was overcrowded room, and they had to actually move it to the high school auditorium. And what happened was over there, I listened to the comments, it was Jews against Gentiles, non-Jews. The Jews wanted high-density, and the senior community came out and screamed, you will see one day, don't do it, you won't be able to drive in Lakewood, the high-density will destroy you. There was the planners over there, he mentioned the planners over there, said that it's recommended high-density. If you look what happened to Lakewood today, we see is that whoever these planners was, we have to advertise them that nobody should even hire them, or even look at them, to put them out of business, whatever they destroyed in Lakewood. So please, don't mention that Smart Growth Plan. And we, again, as you see, a lot of, and the Orthodox community are coming out now against high-density, we have to apologize to the seniors for not seeing what they saw then. Now, as far as the, I'm trying not to do it in questions. As far as the ordinance, that he said that the Township acted on it, and it was illegal. The fact, the legal matter of it is that now, it's, there's no ordinance. It was never adopted. Accordingly, to the court, it doesn't exist. The Township Committee decided, after they saw what their planners did to them, they decided not to act on that ordinance after what they saw what happened. So to come now and say, here's the Township Committee acted then, and then they saw that they were wrong, not because of the legal matter, it just came out as God helped us, and the judge, and basically prevented from destroying a neighborhood and making a certain part of Lakewood that is not so congested here, to make it more congested, it's, yeah.
It's a yeah. You got that?
I don't like when the chairman makes fun of me. You know, it's hard for me to speak in English. I could rather speak in Yiddish, and it will be more fluently, and you could have a translator, but I have a hard time speaking English and breaking my teeth. And I would expect the chairman should please...
You're right. My apologies.
Thank you. The fact that there's more properties around it that could come for the board and saying is, you gave these developers the right to build more units, more than the zoning now gives them, and they will come to the board. It's actually, in the legal terms, it's considered spot zoning, as individual mentioned in the previous application. If you have more property surrounding that property that is similar to this property, and basically going to the point of it, that what the applicant is asking is, zoning board, do the Township Committee's job. Township Committee should have acted on it, they didn't. Please, they don't have the wisdom to act on this. They are waiting for the new master plan, and I don't know what everybody's talking about. The Township Committee voted and sent the letter to the master plan committee, Mr. Ekman sent the letter, stating that we don't want higher density, we don't want the new master plan to be like the old master plan. Whatever ordinance is existing, we don't want more, only less. So I don't know what Brian is saying, is that we don't know what the Township Committee is heading with the master plan. And again, he's still making this school argument, you know, we could build schools. Lakewood shouldn't have any zones, because every place you can build schools, so there's no zoning anymore, because every applicant could come and argue that we could build a school. Then I want to speak about this applicant. Why is this applicant have, you know, we see a lot of applications was built, this is the only one that was not built. Why does the applicant think that he's going to get special treatment from this board? I see we have Mr. Manasha Frankel over here, we have Noe F. Gordon over here, we have Jonas Arubin over here, sitting over here in the front. It seems like they are sure that the board is going to consider giving them special treatment. And speaking about this applicant, and the problem that we have, that developments that they built, they are trying to eliminate roads, like we see now with Oak Street Corridor, they misled, actually, the Township Committee to try and eliminate roads over there, trying to eliminate sidewalks, they did it with the Oak Street Corridor. And there is a community now existing that actually the applicant did not feel that it's important to put sidewalks. I'm talking about the Baltic community, this one street, that doesn't have sidewalks. I ask, why doesn't it have sidewalks? Because the site plan did not exist. I don't know if this engineer messed it up, could be the previous one, it's actually, it's a Lakewood habit that engineers mess up applications, but the fact is that the site plan did not say, did not ask for a waiver for it, because the board would have never granted it to them, and the applicant does not feel that it's important, even though he didn't get a waiver, to put in sidewalks. So he's not the biggest subject that there is. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hopter, please raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear or affirm to tell the holders to help you out?
I do. William Hopter, 30th School House Lane. Boy, there's been some theatrics tonight on this, but, you know, the basic issue is when applicant originally proposed this, and he went to a court hearing where the judge said many things, among them was the, it was not proper notice. The issue is that applicant could have renoticed, chose not to. Why? Because the Township Committee decided not to go along with that high-density. They never did the ordinance, that exists. Now, I keep on hearing about the master plan. I was on the master plan committee 2006, 2007. No one on the master plan committee 2016, 2017. There was no master plan committee, new master plan in between. There were amendments to it. But I keep hearing about the master plan committee in 2014, there wasn't any. Also, the master plan committee that I sit on right now, because I'm taking this up, they're still in the committee, the subcommittee processes, where we divided up, each person has different subcommittees that they run. All this information is coming up to the central, the master plan committee, that will consolidate that when all the master committees are faced. Now, I mean, here we have applicant that says, oh, that should have been R-12. Well, it's R-40. That means one house per acre. Didn't come in with an application saying, gee, give me a break, give me two houses per acre. Didn't, you know, 30 houses were nine are permitted. And that would back those up to a neighborhood? Cross Street, if any of you gentlemen ever drove down... Cross Street, if any of you gentlemen ever drove down Cross Street, it would be clear in your mind, I don't know how you can get out. We have, I live off of Augusta Boulevard, and you can't get out on, you know not to go to Cross Street different times of the day, because there's a mile backup, many times in both, both the directions. The density on Cross Street has just gone wild over the last several years, three or four years, before a lot of this stuff was even planned. I just saw last week, the CAPR application had been submitted, to ask for 936 additional homes, on which is now Eagle Ridge Golf Course. With the possibility that they're going to egress and ingress on Cross Street. There won't be, it's, you cannot get to Cross Street now, and if you get there, you can't go anywhere. It's got to stop, you know? There's not be places in Lakewood Township, that instead of putting thirty homes where nine are permitted, you might want to try to put nine. And sometimes, if you want to really be a nice guy, maybe put eighteen. But not thirty! Come on! The master plan committee never intended that, the township never intended it. Well, at one time, they did, when they were saying, what are we going to do about housing? Well, but I know there's going to be seven hundred houses over in the Oak Street Carter. It's going to be 936 over here next to Cross Street. Come on! I don't know where you can get enough people to fill all them, and especially, the density in the southeast, southwest sector of Lakewood now is just grown so fast, so rapidly, that it's incredible. You can't drive there anymore. It's just got, it's just got to stop. When I see this, it just makes me wonder, how could a planning board, or a zoning board, ever approve this kind of density in a place, in our location, that is so dense now? Maybe the county planning board is planning on widening Cross Street. That's kind of like closing the barn door after the horse has escaped. We can't move now. And can you imagine what we're going to try to do when they open up the street for construction? There are thousands of children that go to school on Cross Street. My goodness, when I think of all of the additional homes that would bring that much more traffic, nobody has a chance. If there's ever an emergency up there, fire, EMS, I don't know how they would get there. So, you know, use your heads, you're good people, you're good planners, this doesn't belong on Cross Street, or off of Cross Street. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, so please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I do.
Can you give us your full name and spell your last?
First name's Gregory, last name's Mick, M-I-C-K. I live at 63 Drake Road, Lakewood, New Jersey. I just want to start off with, it was like Saturday Night Live here tonight, I don't know if you know the show, but it was. Like, there's a lot of things I want to say, like the first applicant here, he built the place, it's too small, you asked him to put some bushes, which it shouldn't be like, he should have done what, he's supposed to read his rules and regulations and not to build a house. And here he gets, he gets away with it because he's going to get a gallon of paint and paint his foundation, and two rose bushes from Home Depot. And then we have, I forgot the other one because I walked out, I started laughing. But this one here, this affects me, because I live on Drake Road. There's nothing like this gentleman to say that it was a great neighborhood. It was, but it's shot, it doesn't matter now. And like you, you were just talking on Hope Road, the beautiful houses, you love to see something over there. What's that tell me? It's going to be passed. And right now, I really don't give a, whatever you want to call it, because I'm going to try to leave here. I love Lakewood. I had a nice house, I still have a nice house, and you're saying you like to see those beautiful houses. Well, I used to like to sit on my deck and see the deer, the squirrels, the foxes, the hawks flying around. Now, you sit out on my deck at night, it's like an airport or a mall. The houses, the new houses they built, single family, three front doors, four basement doors, eight cars in the house, single family, it's like an airport. And the lights are shot across the street from me, myself, and same, the only unorthodox people live in the neighborhood. Every Friday, every night, the lights run, it's like, it's like a city, it's not like a country anymore. And this gentleman here, Mr. Fleishman, he knows, Flanery, I'm sorry, he knows how nice it was, because him and his wife used to rollerblade, they used to ride bicycles, walk their dog back and forth. Myself and my wife, we used to walk the road. You can't. It's like Route 9. You got twenty, thirty school buses in the morning. They're making K-turns in my driveway, running over my bricks, because there's not enough room on the road. And the garbage, I can't believe the garbage. I picked thirteen plastic bags out of my bushes, just this past Saturday. And all kinds of garbage, you go to school, they got chilling cups, they got the pizza box from Pizza Plus, they got everything all over. Now, if I was the rabbi of the school, I'd take those seventy-five-hundred kids, that's in a two-bedroom ranch, it's a school with three trailers, I'd have those kids pick up the garbage, they don't. I talk to the rabbi, and he goes, they're here to study. Study? How about pick up the damn garbage? Then another thing here, it's only thirty homes. You know it's going to be sixty families, it's going to be two cars per family, average of five kids, you're going to have four or five hundred people there, and they're going to use Drake Road? Drake Road can't handle it. As a matter of fact, you go down Drake Road, both sides of the street are falling apart. I can't have a flower bed in front of the house, because the pavements, I would say about four feet away from the flower bed. So I don't see where, like, I really don't care. I hope you pass it so I can get out. But the thing is, it used to be a beautiful neighborhood, and it isn't. Here's another thing, you're building seven hundred houses here, nine hundred here, you're building here. Anybody ever think about the busing? Where are you going to get the busing, to bus all these kids? Where are you going to get the money? You're going to have the parents, oh, I'm going to drive my kid, we don't get the busing. Go ahead, drive them. You know what I'm saying? Like, who's going to pay for all this busing? My taxes are over thirteen thousand dollars. When I built my house, they were forty-two hundred, and I still get my one garbage pickup a week. And I got a call four months later from them, from the pickup my leaves. So I really don't care what you do, because I've been to a lot of planning boards, you yes me to death, and you turn around, you just do what the hell you want anyway. So I'm just giving my opinion, and like I said, maybe do, do it, I don't care. And a lot of people feel the same way about Lakewood. Everybody says Lakewood's a bad town, it's not a bad town. You guys are zoning, the other one's planning. What the hell are you zoning, what are you planning? You're killing this town. It wasn't built for all these people. In the late, early sixties, Rutgers University did a study on the aquifers in Lakewood, and they said if Lakewood keeps building like they do now, this is in the sixties, by 2010, they're going to run out of water, or sooner after. And look at Lakewood now, what are you going to do in five or ten years when there's no water? So you do what you want, you look at your pretty houses, and whatever you like that, but I just want to say what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
And can you give us your full name and spell your last?
Yes, my name is Hadassa Buxbaum, B-U-X, B-A-U-M. I live at 315 Damiano Way.
Just say your first name, ma'am.
Hadassa, H-A-D-A-S-S-A. Okay? I live in the fifty-five-plus development called The Enclave, which is boarded by Massachusetts and Cross Streets. I bought my home there a year ago, last Friday, actually, and I was traveling between where I lived before, which was a country place on the south side of the lake, to my new home, as I was planning and buying furniture, et cetera. The trip used to take me five minutes, and that's abiding by the speed limit, more or less. Now it takes me, on a good day, fifteen minutes. That's in one year's time. Now, right to the east, between, Damiano empties out onto Cross Street, and between that exit from our property to Route 9, to my east, is a project going up, it's called the Satma Project, seventy-two duplexes, that's a hundred forty-four homes. They're attached whole rows like bunkers. On the other side, the other side of Massachusetts, Fairways, they're putting up another ninety-two homes. Right across from my entrance, there was a proposal here, a request for variance by marked properties, they wanted to take a lot and subdivide it. There seems to be no end. I try to go, when I have to go to Gourmet Lot, which is off Kennedy Boulevard and Route 9, instead of going up Route 9, because that takes forever, I go all the way up Cross Street, and East Veterans Highway, and Hope Chapel Road, to county line. That, that's the whole out-of-way I have to go for such a trip. And now, and every time I come up with a different direction to avoid Route 9, it seems like the rest of the world has either been building there, or has found that same quote-unquote shortcut, so that it's no longer a shortcut. When I want on the Sabbath, when traffic is less, when I want on the Sabbath, to cross from where I come out Damiano to Cross Street, and just go right across the street to the entrance to Elmore, to God's synagogue, it is dangerous. I'm not so decrepit, I can move, I can walk quite well. Very hard to get across, the traffic is zooming, there's no traffic light, between Route 9 and I believe Prospect, that's a whole, no, I'm sorry, there's Massachusetts, and then there's a whole section. So now, if you're going to have this development, which is going to empty out on Cross Street, and you're going to allow it based on a promise of Cross Street getting another lane to it, just like Route 9 has been getting another lane for the ten years that I'm living in Lakewood, you know, it just doesn't make any sense. Nobody has spoken about any traffic lights, it was last week again, an accident at one of the schools coming out of the driveway, because there's so much traffic on Cross, people get impatient, and they just start out, the same that's happening on Route 9. We have to consider, not just the quality of life, but the safety issues, and we don't want it on our consciences that we've, with the goal of providing affordable or unaffordable houses, we've endangered more people. You have a lot of senior citizens between Fairways and between The Enclave, there are no traffic lights there, you're just increasing the traffic, and I think it needs to be considered, and not rely on possibly, in two years, or five years, or ten years, they're going to widen Cross Street.
Thank you.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I do.
Can you give us your full name and spell your last, please?
Ariel Mizrahi Schulman, M-I-Z-R-A-C-H-I hyphen S-C-H-U-L-M-A-N.
Sorry, I can't write that fast. M-I-Z-R-A-C-H-
I, hyphen, S-C-H-U-L-M-A-N. Okay. I've lived in Lakewood my whole life.
Your first name?
Fifty-nine Drake Road.
And your first name, I'm sorry?
Ariel.
Ariel.
I've lived in Lakewood my whole life. Born and bred here, roots go back a hundred years. I've lived on Drake Road for over thirty years. As far as density, I remember when Cross Street, when The Enclave didn't exist, and neither did the Fairways, and that was a big sand pit, that we used to ski, shoot, and ride our dirt bikes back there. But change happens, and there is a need for housing. Lakewood is not a town anymore, it's about populace of a city. There needs to be public transportation, we're trying, everything's moving along. However, my house has been privately for sale for over a year. I've got no bites on it. I'm about an acre. Nobody wants, it's, I don't think it's that nobody wants to buy my house, I think they're all looking to see what's going to go on with density. I've sat while there's, I don't know, eight, nine schools on my street. We do have, there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of walking traffic, the boys walk back and forth all the time. Neiman Road's a bit of a nightmare. As far as density is concerned, we all had to deal with the Fairways, we all had to deal with The Enclave. Yes, there should be more consideration to traffic and roadways, but if we're not cul-de-sac-ing, if we're cutting through developments and going straight from Drake Road to Cross Street, or Drake Road, or Ridgeway Avenue, whatever you want to call it, straight through to White Road, and everything in between, there's more ways to get around, and more traffic to get around. As far as busing is concerned, listen, you can't go backwards, variances were given, variants were given to schools, you know, residential homes that turned into schools that didn't have driveways big enough for a bus. So things were variance, and things were dunce, because the town was growing as fast as it is. I'm very sorry that it upsets everybody, that density, that people want density. I don't like the garbage where I live, it's everywhere, traffic getting in and out of my house. I lived at a time on Drake Road where three cars came down the street, I didn't need curtains in my house, because it was black, there was nothing there. That time has come and gone. And I think that single-family homes on twelve-thousand-square-foot lots, that are beautifully landscaped, just add more appeal to the neighborhood than vacant houses that have, listen, all the large parcels of property have already been bought. What's left are the people who own an acre, a little less than an acre, two-acre lots, that's all that's left by me. So as far as density, and as far as property, I live in an area that used to be so beautiful, but I only have two neighbors. Everything else is either a school or a vacant house. So I don't object to beautiful homes being built on smaller lots, that seems to be what people want, that seems to be what the drive of the town is going to. You know, I don't have a problem, I see that there's other projects, the projects that's between Prospect Street and Massachusetts, that's going to be a huge project. We all came out with The Enclave, we didn't want the left-hand turn coming from Route 9 into The Enclave, we all thought that was going to be very dangerous. There was a sign, no left turn for a while, but that didn't work out, and left turns are there. The project right behind The Enclave, the townhouse development that's going up, that's right on Cross Street. I don't know where the state's going to get, or the county's going to get the room to widen the road down there by Route 9, unless you take it from the other side of the road, but the bottom line is, is that the more people want to move here, the more housing is going to be needed. The Western Corridor was all horse farms, farms, it's all vacant land right now. What's going to happen? Is everything going to be a school? And if that's the case, then who dictates the price of property? I don't think that that's a very fair solution to those of us who've lived there and enjoyed it, but now the time is over. People don't want acre lots, they want smaller, they want density. Nobody's saying make it an eighth of an acre, nobody's saying make it townhouses. Lovely twelve-thousand-square-foot lots, that don't need septic, that don't need, you know, we have water on the street, would be lovely homes, and nice for children to walk to school. It's a beautiful area. I can't see any more schools. I can see more housing where the kids can walk to school, and enjoy the neighborhood like we all did. But density's going to happen. I can't see vacant pieces of land just hanging out, because everybody who lives in the Fairways is happy, but I wasn't happy when that went away, and that density happened, and all the traffic was there. So I just, I just think that we have to move forward, and we have to do it as smart as possible, make sure the roads are wide enough, make sure there's sidewalks, make sure that lots are the right size, and move forward. And that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else, please step up.
Yes, so do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I affirm.
Full name is Byelak.
Chaim Grunberger, G-R-U-N-B-E-R-G-E-R, Sixth Serenity Way.
Sixth what?
Serenity Way, off Drake, 41 Drake, that was my old address. Can I show a plan of the amount of schools that are currently?
You actually?
Sorry. Currently, there are a tremendous amount of schools that create a lot of traffic during school hours. I'm sure all my neighbors have almost hit a hitchhiker, standing from one of those schools more times than they can count. Just from what I understand, the alternative to zoning this is another school, and that's really a very horrifying thought. I don't want to take up too much of your time, I just think that the thought of regular, nice- Just from what I understand, the alternative to zoning this is another school, and that's really a very horrifying thought. I don't wanna take up too much of your time, I just think that the thought of regular, nice-sized lots and beautiful homes is a much more preferable one than just building more and more schools than this street can handle.
Anyone else please step up? Yeah, it should be nine. Okay. Yeah. Finish. Sir, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I do.
Can you pull down and spell your last?
Okay, Walter Lucas, L-U-C-A-S.
Thank you.
Where's your address?
I live on Newport Avenue. I'm gonna, I'll try to make this brief, talk about some, what I think is good zoning. If you're standing at James and Cross and going in a eastwardly direction, you see good zoning, there is some zoning for, I mean, maybe some wrong terms here, but commercial or industrial. Coke has a place there, there's a place called Lakewood Park, industrial, there is Conklin, another industrial, there's about half a dozen of them, I'm gonna color them blue. So that's good zoning, it's a need. There's also good zoning for seniors, there's the fairways, which is there, I'm gonna color that gold. And there's also good zoning for recreation, the recreation is the golf course, and if I come back in this direction again, it's similar, right? So it's all good zoning, it's needed zoning. If you stand at James and Cross again and look to the west, which is the Jackson Line, which is only about a half a mile, what's missing in all these colors is there's nothing for families, right? It's commercial, it's, we take care of, you know, the seniors, we have recreation, but there's nothing there for families. I think good zoning would include something that would provide for a neighborhood or community where the kids grow up together, where the kids grow up together, the families have picnics together, parties together, birthdays together, and I did live in such a neighborhood, it was between Clifton and Lexington, up out of Cemetery, I lived there for fifteen years, and everybody in the family, in the neighborhood grew up nicely together. And basically it was an R-ten neighborhood. So if you take a look at that zoning, again, what is really missing is something for families, something where families can grow, and that sort of thing. Color it on top of all this, I'm gonna call it murky gray, which is schools. It's just, everything you look, it's schools, 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 traffic, and I think someone mentioned that there's probably about twenty schools there, and they really generate all the traffic. Once the nine o'clock to ten o'clock is done, you know, I go cruising everywhere I wanna go. So consider families, standing at, you know, that corner, think you've got lovely zoning for everybody else, there's nothing for families. And to me, R-ten, R-twelve would be very good. Any questions? Say again?
What's your address?
I live on Newport Avenue.
On Newport Avenue.
Right from Newport, and I think she knows who I am. She's got lots of my letters about, politely said, was her perm, you look in school?
Okay. Anyone else please step up?
Sir, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I do. My name is Dove Zeitman, Z-E-I-T-M-A-N.
Do you prefer your last?
Dove, D-O-V.
Your last question?
Twenty-six Serenity Way. So I live off of Drake Road, and the schools in that area are just terrible, like, you drive up Drake Road and there are people hitchhiking on Drake, I mean, children, I mean, teenagers, and I almost hit them like a few times a day, it's really, it's not wine enough for schools. Same goes for Nyman, when they're let out onto the school buses, some of the school buses don't have their flashing lights on, and it's just, it's scary. I drive like well under the speed limit over there, and anything involving schools, I just, I wouldn't recommend for that neighborhood, not that I know anything about zoning or anything, but anything other than a school would be, would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, who's up?
Robert Salter.
Give me one second, please, one second, please.
Yeah, I'm on my clock.
Ten to eleven.
Eight, ten to eleven, I'm not gonna start it, no. This is gonna be too long of an application. What? No. I'm just gonna be trying to play eleven o'clock with this application, and then we're gonna close tonight, you know, job, sorry. All we have left is to show you the architecture. I remember, so if you wanna wait, but we'd like to close sharp at ten o'clock, at eleven o'clock. Okay?
I understand.
Okay. It's up to you. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Robert Salter, S-A-L-T-E-R, two Maplehurst Avenue.
Your first name is Salter?
Robert.
Robert.
Okay. I keep it short, I know it's late. I just wanna say, I don't know how long Mr. Flannery hasn't lived in Lakewood off of the street he did, but the, all the mention of the schools that are up and down Cross Street, when you get right down to it, there may be only three or four real schools, the rest are, like the other gentleman said, they're just houses that have been converted into training centers, and basically, my opinion is, I think that the people there, though they're teaching religious studies, I think they're mainly out to make money. What you said earlier about some nice homes in that area, yeah, if you built ten homes, nine homes in that ten-acre lots or area, I don't think anybody would complain. But when you start to sit here and say you wanna triple that, and though there's board members that don't think traffic in Lakewood is any different than traffic anywhere else in New Jersey, thank God we don't, they don't wear bags on their heads in Newark because we'd have to wear bags on our head here in Lakewood. So the thing is, is you have to be concerned about the traffic, you have to be concerned about the community there and the safety of the people that live there. So putting thirty houses in that area and whether they empty out on Drake or Cross Street or whatever is not helping any of it, it's making the matters worse. The schools that are there are gonna be there until they decide that they wanna sell that and turn that into duplexes, three or four. So it's, it's like the gentleman again said, you, change is gonna happen, everybody says, knows that's gonna happen. And again, what the board decides is what they're gonna decide, it's just, we get the chance to say our opinions and what we feel, and we just hope that the board looks at things and uses their wisdom to say, hey, this is all Lakewood, Jew, Gentile, whatever, that we all have to live here right now, and we should make it the best for the people that are in Lakewood. And more density everywhere you look isn't the best idea. I'm sure if you had ten homes and one acre lots, there'd be people dying to buy that house because they'd like to have the room, they'd like to be not congested and look out their window and hit the house next to them. So just consider these things, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes.
Could you use your full name and spell your last?
Sam Schulman, S-C-H-U-L-M-A-N. Fifty-nine Drake Road, yeah. I just wanna say that I was born and raised here, Lakewood, my whole life, on Cross Street, right where the bean portion of this property is, and I live on Drake Road now, so I've been in that area my whole life, fifty-two years. And to make it quick, real quick, the twelve thousand square foot I have no problem with, I'd be very happy with some beautiful homes, nice landscaping, all that stuff, so twelve thousand square feet wouldn't bother me a bit, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am, would you please raise your hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole?
I affirm.
Can you give us your full name and spell your last, please?
Nekama Goldstein, G-O-L-D-S-T-E-I-N.
And your first name is?
N-E-C-H-A-M-A. Kingsfield Drive. I live in Westgate, near that area, and I go down Cross Street every day, and like they say, talk about widening Cross Street, Cross Street needs to be widened now, not when they're gonna build all these new developments that are in the process, that I don't think that widening it is gonna help it for this. Another thing is that, like, as people are saying, there's so many schools in the area, they're always picking up hitchhikers, I'm also picking up hitchhikers, but they're not going to the schools in that area, they're going to the schools in Oak, they're going to the schools all over the place. It has nothing to do with the schools in the area, it has to do with people hitchhiking in Lakewood. Also, there was an application that came in a few months ago to build on Prospect and Massachusetts, and there was a lawyer there, and as everyone was saying the same thing, it's gonna be turned into a school, it's not houses, and she said something very interesting, and she said a school is a red herring because you see all these schools coming up in these houses, and any of these thirty houses could become a school. It's not that you're avoiding a school, you just might have it somewhere else in a much smaller area. Also, they're saying that you need houses, people need to live in houses, and I don't think we need more houses in Lakewood. I mean, if you look at the rental list in the Massamatan, it's seventeen pages long. The people that are buying the houses now are not buying them to live in, they're buying them to rent out. I do not think that we need more houses at this point in Lakewood. I think the density is dense enough. I really don't think that this is the time now to talk about making a zone smaller than it is. And you also, I live in Westgate where they're always building, and they have approval for ten houses, and the next day they come back to make them duplexes. So here we have an approval where they wanna make it an R-twelve for, you know, one house on twelve thousand square foot lots, and tomorrow they might come back to, let's do it the R-twelve B and make it duplexes. So, I don't know, you have to be very careful about these things, and I don't think this area needs the density, and I don't think that Lakewood needs more density.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close it to the public. Wanna go first?
I didn't hear you say, I don't have a lot to say.
Go ahead.
Frank, you addressed some of the comments that were raised, unless you're going nowhere.
Well, first of all, I think when certain people get up and give you their legal opinions and they're not lawyers, I'm not gonna say any names, but Mr. Klein is saying I can say his name. And when he says people get special treatment, I've been before this board for many years, people don't get special treatment, the board listens to the applications, and then Mr. Hobday gets up and says, there was no master plan amendment of two thousand and fourteen.
He didn't say that. He said that there was no master plan, there was an amendment.
And I didn't say there was a master plan, I clearly read the two thousand and fourteen master plan amendment. Mr. Hobday talks about the master plan advisory committee didn't sue anything. Well, the master plan advisory committee has no power. The master plan advisory committee prepares a document that they give to the planning board, and the planning board adopts a master plan based on input. So the master plan advisory committee has no power and makes no decisions, the planning board makes the decisions. The planning board in two thousand and fourteen adopted an amendment to the master plan that said this area should be an R-twelve B, and it specifically said it could have duplexes which would allow a density of seven point two dwelling units per acre. When I hear people talking about this being too dense, people from the adult communities at four and a half units per acre, people from Westgate at fifteen units per acre, and we're asking for three units per acre, it just amazes me that somebody could say, this is overly dense. When somebody says that the southwest corner is overly dense, you look at areas like Westgate, you look at the downtown area, you look at all the other areas, the areas where they have townhouses at eight units per acre, twelve thousand square foot lots, it amazes me that somebody would refer to that as a dense area in Lakewood. If you're in Jackson or Tom's River, twelve thousand square foot lots is a dense area. In Lakewood, twelve thousand square foot lots is not a dense area. We heard other people talk about what the township committee decided. The township, what the township committee decided, the governing body adopted an ordinance, a judge said they didn't do it properly, but clearly what they decided was that what the master plan amendment had recommended was a good thing. The township committee right now is saying, when the planning board adopts a master plan, then they'll, they'll consider doing ordinances. This applicant has been waiting way too long, the municipal land use law says that in special cases and for special reasons, the zoning board can grant the devariance for density if we show the special reasons plus the positive and negative criteria. I went through all those special reasons, this is certainly a uniquely situated property at the bend in Drake Road connecting to Cross Street. There's no question this property is unique. The positive and the negative criteria, the comments I hear that everybody is against, and I don't think anybody would be in the room if we didn't have a traffic problem. So the problem is traffic, the traffic is already there, the property is zoned to allow schools, the history of this area is clear that nobody's coming in, building these forty thousand square foot lots that other people seem to think would be nice there, and I'm not gonna disagree, forty thousand square foot lots would be nice there, but nobody's gonna build forty thousand square foot lots, and it's been almost twenty years since anybody's built one. There's forty thousand square foot lots half a mile away in Jackson, and the people that want forty thousand square foot lots can go there and get very nice houses very reasonably. In Lakewood, twelve thousand square foot lot is a large lot, they'll provide beautiful houses, the same as the development in Hope Hill that the chairman mentioned, and it's my opinion the board should grant this, it's a bifurcated, you're not giving us any number of units. If the board acts favorably and we come back, we have to convince the board that the number of units we show on the plan makes sense.
Just to add, several objectives indicated what's gonna be next. Well, every application stands on its own feet. This application comes here telling you that you're gonna be opening up another road, every, people are objecting to street vacations and closing up streets and having dead ends. Here you're gonna have, two roads are gonna open up, the traffic is gonna flow much better. We know the county's doing something, we've agreed that when we come back, we're gonna meet with the county, we're gonna make sure that our roads work with what they have in their plans. Additionally, we're bringing water and sewer from Drake all the way to Cross. This is gonna help the, this is gonna help problems that the board may not even know about. The schools have issues, a lot of the schools have to do off, have to do catering off-site. What does that cause up? Causes more traffic because you need deliveries every day to these schools. There, all these little things are gonna happen, they're gonna help the overall area that this applicant is willing to do.
I just have a couple of questions and comments. How many of us does this help?
Ten point, ten point something.
Jerry, help me out over here, someone mentioned to me about spot zoning, can you define that?
Well, spot zoning.
Are we stuck on that issue or not?
Well, well, spot zoning is a term which anticipates a island, so to speak, different from the surrounding area that in particular you just were plumped in there, which is not in concert with.
Mike.
Sorry?
Mike.
Which is not in concert with the surrounding neighborhood, so.
And again, this application is going off of what was recommended in the master plan.
Okay, we got that, we got that.
No, I understand that, the reason why it's not spot zoning, I'm just.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I heard what everyone had to say, I haven't agreed somewhat a little bit, or somewhat a little more with Bill and what Tom have to say about the area and about all the density that's going on and everything has to take into consideration. It's very hard for me to tell you today without knowing what you're planning on doing here with, as you mentioned, this thing needs a lot of work, okay? As you know, this board does not give a particular amount and a particular number on units that goes off, and as Bill said, he did two units, two homes per, two to forty, ten acre, two and a half to forty acre, I don't know what that number's gonna be, three, I don't know what that number's gonna be, right? We gotta take into consideration whatever all the neighbors said. Twelve thousand, thirty units, I think it's gonna be kind of a little bit tight to squeeze in over here. We have taken into consideration what the neighbors have, what the neighbors have to say. We have taken into consideration what the neighbors have to say. Am I totally against this whole thing we're about rezoning? No. Do I want to see bigger than twelve thousand? Yes. Fifteen thousand square foot lots, eighteen thousand square foot lots? I can't give you that answer today. I don't know the details how it's going to happen. Do I want to see this piece subdivided? Perhaps. You know, do I want to see this house subdivided, not into townhouses or schools or duplexes? Yes, definitely so. Do I want to see beautiful homes here? Yes, I want to see a gorgeous, nice upscale development area. But to tell you today that I'm going to tell you to subdivide this into twelve thousand square foot lots, I'm not going to say that. We're thinking what the neighbors will currently live there, who currently live with the traffic. I don't live with the traffic. Brian, you don't live with the traffic anymore. You don't live with the traffic. I'm thinking all this board lives with the traffic. But we have to take into, like one of the judges said before, do smart zoning, smart growth, smart planning. I for one would like to see what you come back with. If I don't like it, I'll tell you, come back with another design or another plan. If I do like it, I'll say, go ahead with it. But what does you like with me? I need you to come back to me and tell me what's the township doing, what's the county and township doing around about Cross Street. How real is it? Is it real or is it just a thought? If it's just a thought, I won't give you anything. I'll tell you, put it in one half per acre. If it's really, really convinced me that it is kind of move forward, then I'll tell you, okay, let's move on. But it's a very delicate piece of Lakewood, which I want to preserve and I want to keep in that facade of that rural look. So I for one will, don't mind seeing what you have to propose and then go for there, but I'm not going to tell you a number, how many units it's going to be. It might be fifteen thousand, eighteen thousand, twenty thousand, whatever. Mr. Chubb, what are you proposing? Did you not vote on this? No, you have to propose for a subdivision, but we're not going to give a number.
The applicant would be.
I'm not going to give twelve. If you're asking for twelve, that means we're giving them a certain number. What is the question?
The applicant would be okay with an approval not to exceed two point eight dwelling units per acre. We were looking for three, so.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, it can go down. When we come back, if we don't show the board that what's there makes sense, we're not locked into any number, we're not locked into any lot size.
Don't lock into any lot size, don't lock into any number. If I decide to.
A density not to exceed. A density not to exceed two point eight dwelling units per acre.
I have no problem with that, not to exceed. But if I come back and you showed me, you don't convince the board, and I say I want two point five per acre, so be it.
Yes.
What is this application is to build development in accordance with the R-12 zoning.
Well, if we tell them we want to build in accordance with the R-12, means I have to lock into a certain number of units on twelve thousand.
That's his application.
Our application is a bifurcated application to exceed the density of one point one, and we were looking for a density of three. Based upon the R-12. We're not looking for any of the bulk variances tonight.
They always do that.
Right, this board has never given a specific number. In the past, you have said, you have given lot sizes, we don't need a lot size.
Wait, please stop. The application says they want one area of twelve thousand, their application, twelve thousand square feet or more. The review for Mr. Terry says that the applicant needs to develop this ten point six acre block according to the R-12 standards. Look, this isn't a dart game, you know? The application is what it is, it says twelve thousand feet or more. So I think that's what we have to explore. Now, there isn't a subdivision in front of you, but even though you're bifurcating the application, you have to have some specificity in what you could look at.
So let me ask you a question. We go through this all the time, and every supplement comes up, so I'm going to re-ask you the question again. If they come in with twelve thousand square foot lots and I don't like it, right?
Yes, go ahead.
And I don't like it, I'm just subdivision, right? I don't like it, it's too dense, it doesn't look good. Am I locked into those numbers? Do I have to give them twelve thousand square foot lots?
Well, if you're going to grant a use variance to build in accordance with the R-12 standards, that's what they're asking for. So I don't know.
We usually in the past did not lock in. One second, guys, give me a minute, give me a minute. In the past, one minute, one minute, one minute. In the past, when we had a subdivision, we never gave them an amount of units, how many you can put in. He said, we want to put in a subdivision, you want to subdivide it, no smaller than twelve thousand, but it could be greater. That's the way in the past we have done it, that it won't be smaller than twelve thousand square foot lots.
I think if you're going to grant a use variance to build on smaller lots than what is now permitted, you have to have some specificity. Fine, please, you have to have some specificity as to how big the lots are going to be.
But he can come in greater than that. My problem is that he wants to put in no smaller than twelve thousand square foot lots, right? And then he brings me in an application, a subdivision of fifteen thousand square foot lot, which is greater than twelve. Does that mean that this subdivision, this, one minute please, that this, what we gave him tonight, his use variance, is not avoided?
Yes.
So if he brings in later.
Because if you're approving it with twelve thousand square feet, and he comes in at fifteen thousand square feet, I mean, I'm not an engineer, that might change the layout, that might change being able to get out the Cross Street. I mean, I can't tell you what would happen. Nobody can tell you. That's why you're here tonight, looking at twelve thousand square feet.
So how did we in the past give them a use variance without a number of units?
I don't know, I don't want to talk about any other application of what we have.
No, in the past, that's what we used to do on a subdivision, we used to give them no number of units. We used to give them.
Jim, I'm not.
What?
The fort should do what you think is best.
What are you saying?
It would change if what they're asking for is approval to build single family houses with the R-12 standards.
I'm not even sure if they're asking for a twelve or twelve B, but if it's assuming that's just.
Twelve, twelve thousand. Okay, twelve thousand, well, there's a difference. Because twelve B would give them the right to come back with duplexes, R-12 is not. So if they're going to build on the R-12, and the difference with B is that they have some of these lots have smaller frontage than, and they would be asking for variances, that would be your leverage. You could say, okay, unless you're coming with nineteen foot frontage, we're not granting this particular lot. That would be the only way the numbers would change. Right now, the way they have it laid out, as long as they're going to come up with twelve thousand square foot lots, that is what you're approving. That's how I'm going to see it. You can't tell them, no, you can't do it, if it's going to be in accordance with R-12. So if we're approving R-12, then that's where you.
All right, guys, what are you saying? I mean, in the past, we've always given.
I think that was more in the case of number of.
Mr. Chubb.
I think that was really more in the case of the zoning aspect, the size of lots, obviously, we talked about units. I think this is subdivision.
We used to say, no smaller than twelve thousand, but it could be greater. That's the way, you want twelve thousand, okay, so it won't be smaller than twelve thousand, but we will group greater ones.
So would it be that we could force it greater than twelve thousand?
You could say, yes, we're not allowing it unless it's three thousand square feet.
And later on, unless it fits, we will let our group and our subdivision. He said they can't put in lots of ten thousand square feet for eleven thousand five hundred. Starting off with twelve thousand. But if you start with twelve unless it fits, and it doesn't look nice, then he goes, it's a regular. That's what I remember, how we, no smaller than twelve thousand will be one of the ones. Jerry, this is what we've done for the last.
What is it?
When you have said, this is going to be an R-12, you said, you could override this, no more than three units. And we've come back, we've said, no twenty five, forty three. We didn't make it to R-12.
The applicant in his application asked for the bulk variances. If the board doesn't want to grant any bulk variances, all we would need in the use is the density variance. So if the board trims down the request that we made for the bulk variances and just gives us a density of two point eight, when we come back, the twelve thousand will require a variance. So as Mr. Ribiad is saying, if you don't like the twelve thousand, it needs a variance, you say it doesn't work, and we don't get it. So the board would be giving us less than we submitted in our application. Mr. Dasty is right, our application was for the bulk variances for R-12. It would give the applicant an indication that the board says, yep, something different than R-40 makes sense, go figure it out, get your, and come back.
But Jerry, what Mr. Dasty's saying.
Hey, Tom, let me tell you something. Everybody needs to know, my repeated application, they're asking for a use variance, and they want to save money, which is understandable, they don't want to come up with all the plans for a subdivision. But when you're granting them the use variance, you should know, you should be approving how many units it's going to be. And right now, they want thirty units. That's what their application's about.
But when they say it doesn't fit, it doesn't look nice, and we don't like it, later on, what happens if that's approved?
You already approved thirty?
Jerry, if I.
That's the problem, we can't tell them, hey, say, I want thirty.
Oh, I'll lose my, now I'm chasing my tail.
At this point, we would be seeking, we would be seeking no more than two point eight units per acre.
How many is that?
I'm saying, but no more than, I'm not asking anymore for the twelve thousand square.
So we get no bulk variances.
No bulk.
Anything we come back with, we need bulk variances, which the board has the right to deny.
Correct.
Two point eight, Brian, comes out to thirty thousand.
Thirty units.
But we haven't gotten our bulk.
We have no bulk variances.
So we have to come back and show you.
One at a time.
Please, if you grant thirty, you think they're going to back and say, we only want twenty? I mean, maybe thirty's okay.
We have to come back and give you the bulk.
That's exactly my point, I don't want to make this, get stuck on thirty, because if it doesn't fit, I don't want it.
In my opinion, you cannot grant a use variance for density on a bifurcated application without setting the number of units it's going to be.
So I can set the number, no more than thirty, but I can go down later on, no?
Well, they can bring in thirty. Why would, if you say no more than thirty, why would. Mr. Chubb, I've set them out, you guys got to set them out.
Okay.
What about, what about not?
Maybe between twelve and fifteen.
I'm just saying, how about a R-15 for R-15? Say it's not an application for R-15.
We have a lot of other staffing issues of density, et cetera, and we can't have thirty houses, thirty houses, it's a lot of houses. There's no question about it, there's no exit, the road, as far as I look at the plan, it doesn't fit properly. If we approve the application as an R-15, maybe fifteen thousand square feet, it's taken up five units, that's pretty much the whole thing, maybe that's something that can, then every lot is fifteen thousand square feet, a minimum of fifteen thousand, and that makes more sense. That makes that every lot will be a nice lot, nice sized lot, the area remains the same, the density, something has to be done, it's not going to end up being a park, there's no question about it. R-20, request for them on R-20, that's already a little bit too much because nobody's building an R-20. I think an R-15 is a nice, is a nice area, if we can, if we can.
Tony, you may be right.
This is exactly the same thing we approved in Newport, at the end of Newport, we also agreed on an R-15, and with no walk variances. R-15 makes a very nice area, yeah.
You may be right, R-15 may be better, but that's not what the application is.
I understand.
Application's R-12.
Yes, I got to get out of here.
So do you want to change your application to R-15?
It's a bifurcated application, so all it is, if we're setting up the form, the formula for what, how they're going to come up with a site plan, we're not bound by any of the plans they show, and doesn't, the roads, nothing, we're not bound by anything, even if we were considering the R-12. The R-15, again, we're not bound by anything, we're just giving them the formula for the size.
Would the board, would the.
Big line, Josh.
Would the board consider a hybrid? Again, we had said twelve thousand square foot lots you don't like. I can tell you, on this plan that we're showing, incidentally thirty, incidentally too many, but there are many lots that are fifteen thousand square feet, fourteen thousand, thirteen thousand square feet. And there are a bunch that are thirteen or closer to that. We understand lots have to come out. For me to say, tell you right now, every single one's going to be R-15, if I get one that's fourteen thousand, nine fifty-nine, I have to come back, obviously, for that variance. So if we could do, reach to a blend, we would be amenable at this time, as to reduce it, take out some units. Yes, and we're in agreement with that.
With what? You listened for an hour and a half on an application for twelve thousand square foot lots, and you've had, I think, ten or eleven people testify, I would say two thirds of them, against the application, and as you said, the neighborhood comments are certainly something to take into advisement. You just heard an hour and a half, or twelve thousand square foot lots, now we're going to have a different application. Those ten people might want to back up and testify, because now it's a new application. You have to go in something up or down.
Their application was for R-12. R-12, what I mean, but it said, no less than R-12, meaning that there's a possibility that it could be more than that.
You approve R-12, we can.
I don't know, I'm just.
What are you saying?
You have to go in what's on.
That's what I was going to say. Okay, guys. Could it just be drawn recently?
I, you just.
Could it just be drawn, be submitted, or R-15?
They can withdraw the application and bring a new application in if that's what they want to do.
If they don't go, they can come back. They can come back with a different plan, a different plan, different.
So should we make a motion to R-12? Yeah, same way. Okay, guys, guys, it's twenty after eleven. It's twenty, Adam, I need to make a move. Adam, I need to make a move, Adam. Adam, I'm going to, I guess, I mean, yes, or.
At this time, we were going to go back to the drawing, but we hear what the board's saying, we want to make the board happy, we would like to go back and see what we can do to tweak the application and resubmit it.
So why don't we just go for a motion, and then you can resubmit it?
I would prefer to.
If you win, you win, if you lose, then you come back anyway.
Hold on, are you asking that the application be withdrawn and you would resubmit a different plan?
We would submit a different plan. Modified plan, modified plan, yeah, something different than what you.
I would recommend, rather than denying an application, which then can be appealed, if they're withdrawing it, I would suggest that you approve the withdrawal, not a comeback with a smaller plan.
Okay.
But I think we need a motion to do this.
I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal.
Okay. May I get on the second by Michael? Okay.
Mr. Gill.
Yes.
The House.
Yes.
The Naff Howl.
Yes.
The Villiers. Mr. England. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
The Hobbins.
Yes, okay. Motion, resolutions?
You've got to carry the application.
Oh, we've got to carry the application here right now. Anyone that's here for appeal number third, four zero zero four, and four zero one four, your application will be heard on March sixth.
I'm not available on March sixth, I'm in Spain. Tickets are bought.
Okay.
Very difficult to hear an hour and a half on an already built.
Go ahead, it's late at night, so you're going to go to when?
April.
April meeting?
When is the April meeting? Third?
It's over April?
Yes.
First Monday in the article.
April third.
I didn't know whether there's any holidays or what.
April third, okay, so appeal number four zero zero four will be heard on April third.
Without further. Without further notice.
Without further notice. I would waive our time.
Yes.
Can I have a motion from a guy? Motion for mayor, second.
Second.
By Obie. Madam, can I have a motion for appeal number 4014, Aaron Matzura, for March 6?
Yeah, perfect. Anniversary.
Motion, Mr. Haverson, second by Mr. Inver. Madam, second, I recall both of these motions.
Yes. The Haversins. Yes. The Nafkowli. The Libbians. Mr. Inver. Mr. Gonzalez. Yes.
Yes, okay.
Now we have three resolutions. 3997, Captain L. Ray, resolution to deny the office building. Need a motion?
I make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Haverson.
Second.
The second was.
My dialogue.
Mark Gross, he was here, he was here at 3:30.
Gilli, Mr. Gilli. The Haversins. Yes. The Nafkowli. Yes. The Libbians. The Inver, Mr. Coats. The Haversins. Yes. Okay. Mordechai Feigstein. Yitzhak Avenue. The duplex on 15th Lot. A motion.
I make the motion.
Haversin. Haversin.
Haversin, who's got it. Mr. Gilli.